I would like to call to order this work session of the Forest Grove City Council. The topic, excuse me, is Community Enhancement Program. Will the city recorder please call roll?
Councillor Gustafson?
Here.
Councillor Martinez?
Here.
Councillor Gonzalez?
Good afternoon here.
Councillor Marshall?
Here.
Councillor Ewing?
Here.
Councillor Rippey?
Here.
Councillor Valenzuela?
Here.
Councillor Nunez? Commissioner? Mayor Wenzel?
Here. Thank you. I'm going to now turn it over to our staff report led by Paul Dewey.
We got the presentation. Due to tightness of time, we're going to try to move through this pretty quick. So, next slide. Purpose. Hear the presentation of Community Impact Grant, the CIG applications, and deliberate and award one CEP, one CIG grant. Hear the presentation of Community Enhancement Program applications.
Recording in progress.
Deliberate and award one, possibly two grants. We'll discuss that in a minute. Next slide. Each applicant's performed, they have notified they have six minutes for their presentation, including questions from the committee members. For example, they present for three minutes, at least three minutes for the committee members to ask questions. The city recorder will display a timer. Applicants have been asked to focus on the central points of their application since time is limited. Next slide. There are nine applications for the Community Impact Grant. There are nine applications for the CEP grant. All applications are for the $20,000 CEP grant. There was one application from the Parks Department for the $10,000 grant. However, that grant, that purpose was applied to TLT funds, so that application was pulled. There are four applicants, not that fast. There are four applicants that applied for both the CIG and the CEP grants for the same purpose. Those applicants are limited to one presentation and eligible for only one grant. Grants to be awarded this year are one three-year, $40,000 per year CIG grant, one one-year CEP grant of $20,000. Committee, as a reminder, from February, the committee agreed only to award grant amounts that were applied for, i.e. to not award a $10,000 grant to an applicant for a $20,000 grant. Because there are no, back up one, there are no pending applications for the two $10,000 or $2,000, two $5,000 grants that were available. There is funding for the committee to allow awards for the, for a two CEP grant, $20,000 CEP grant. So the one question would be, is there consensus to award two CEP grants or just stay with the one? A process. You've been given a scoring sheet to guide your scoring. The use of these are not mandatory and are intended to help each member track where their top applicants are. And if you do use the score sheets, members are encouraged to score after each interview. If you use scoring sheets, the results need to be displayed for Zoom attendee, by the Zoom attendees and handed in to staff, the in-person attendees, so we have those as part of the public record. That's all I have. So are there any questions on that?
So, you need from us, a decision regarding, just to recap, we didn't have any 10,000 applications or 5,000. So, we have enough funding to add a second
$20,000.
A second $20,000 CEP grant if the committee decides to.
That's correct.
So what does the committee think? Discussion on that, adding a second $20,000 CEP grant?
I'm agreeing with that.
Same.
Yeah, I support that.
Okay.
Support that.
Thank you. So I have consensus to support that. So we will move forward with that. Then just a couple other things I want to point out. So there's six minutes in total for each applicant. That includes questions. So the, when you're coming and doing your application, you can either speak for the whole six minutes, you can stop at four minutes, and then allow time. But council, or the committee also needs to understand that if they hit the six-minute mark, then we cannot ask questions. We're kind of really strict. And that was communicated, I believe, to the applicants as well. At this point, I would like to ask if there's any bias that, or anything that wants to be shared by committee members. Yeah, Councillor Gustafson?
I won't be voting on the CIP grant because of a perceived bias. The city club has applied for that grant. But if everybody is comfortable, I have knowledge of the program and would like to be available to converse about the whole thing, especially since we're combining the CEP and the CIP.
Did the city club apply for both CEP and CIG?
No. Okay, so I, what I'm saying is I have perspective and knowledge on, on pretty much everybody that's been applying here, and we shouldn't be afraid of knowledge. So I wouldn't mind being able to partake in the conversation, but I won't be voting on the CIP grant.
On the CIG?
CIG, you mean?
Yes, CIG.
That's why I was getting confused.
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
So for the, how does the committee feel about that?
Yeah.
Councillor Ewing?
I'm not in on the conversation with Donna. Donna, I'm sorry. My hand was raised for the Forest Grove Senior Center. So I'll hold until you're ready for my conversation. I don't have a problem with Donna being involved. I think she's been very clear on, excuse me, her role. I'm totally, you know, not concerned. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned. I just would say that during the discussion, like, it can't be, in the fairness of all the applicants, there can't be any discussion giving more information to the city club applicant, because that would be unfair to the other people. Right? So you would only be able to discuss the ones that don't have to do with the city club during that discussion and deliberation time. Or the CIG.
Okay, so if, if
The one you're applying.
If others have knowledge, for instance, with any of the Forest Grove High School or the Forest Grove Senior Center or the Friends of Historic Forest Grove because of, of other relationships, will all of those councillors also be not giving their knowledge and perspective on those items as well?
I mean, I don't know. I think there's like general knowledge that people have, and I think that's part of the discussion. I think, to be completely honest, that being the president of the city club, and then also, like, I received communication about a news document that went on the website, that it would, I just think that would be more clear for us as a council to keep it separate, so there's not any concern from the community that there was a conflict.
So knowledge that some of us have on these different programs is something that we'll be keeping out?
I think, can we, when we get to discussion, like, if you're, if there's a concern about what someone's saying, then state it. I think there's a difference from, like, if I was the president of the theater department, I don't, I think there's a perceived bias. So I would not want to speak about that grant. Right? I think that's
I respectfully disagree, only because there's many of us that have specific knowledge on different subjects throughout the years, right? And because we are lucky enough to have that specific knowledge or background or perspective, I don't think that bringing that knowledge to front because we have that knowledge should be feared. I absolutely agree that, you know, not voting is important. But I, I feel like, and I understand what you're saying, but I also feel that it's a slippery slope with being afraid of, of different people's knowledge base.
Okay. Councill, Councillor President Rippey? You're on mute.
Okay. So I just want to let everybody know that I'm on the board for the Senior Center, so I will not be making any comments during their presentation.
Thank you. Councillor Ewing?
Yes, I would like to also note that I am the liaison for, excuse me, the Forest Grove Community Senior Center. I do believe that I can be unbiased, but I'll leave it up to my colleagues as to whether or not I should recuse myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Gonzalez?
Yeah, I think just to try and bring us home and recognizing that we're almost at 5:10 here. I think that we could try and approach this with a, some, you know, grace and being respectful that in a small community, we're all very involved in a lot of things that we care about. Well, we can try, we can try and keep in mind that if we are formal representatives of, let's see, on a board of directors, or we are compensated by an organization to, to recuse ourselves, acknowledge the conflict of interest and abstain. And I would say, go as to, as to not lobby, but can answer questions if questions do come up, if a representative was not here for that organization. But that's, that's probably the, the boundaries that I would feel comfortable with. But in the interest of time, we're a small community. Let's try and exercise some discretion here around that healthy tension. And I think, I think we all understand the general nature of, of what is probably right and wrong. That's okay with you, Mayor?
Yep. How does everyone feel? Okay, and then I would just like to disclose that my in-laws are, one of my in-laws, David Morley, is the president of the Friends of Historic Forest Grove. I don't think I will show any bias towards them, but if any councillors think I may, then I will recuse myself. Okay, hearing none, we're going to start with our presentations. And the timer is going to be on the screen for our people presenting. So just keep in mind that you have a six-minute time limit. Okay, so we're going to start with Adelante Mujeres.
Hi, all. I believe we just need our, one of our attendees, Francia Yera, to be included as a panelist, so that they can unmute themselves.
So go to attendees. Can we stop the time? What's the name under that sage?
It would be Francia Yera.
Okay, Francia?
Hi Francia, are you there?
And now she should be, Francia?
I'm here.
There we go. Cool. Okay.
All right. We will go ahead and begin. Hi, everyone. My name is Bailey Matlock, Grants Manager at Adelante Mujeres. And we are a local nonprofit whose mission is to serve the Latina community here in Forest Grove, Oregon. Today, we are coming together in a collaboration between two of our four departments, our microenterprises and our child nutrition programs to provide this CIG grant proposal ask.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sage Freeman, and I am the Market Access Program Manager at Adelante Mujeres. I'm here to share about the impact of the projects relating to the Forest Grove Farmers Market. In 2023, over half a million dollars was spent out of the market, keeping that money within the local food, or within the local Forest Grove economy. About one-fifth of the total gross sales goes to support our food access programs. And this market really becomes a recreational area for families through our live entertainment, food demonstrations, and special events. And the goal of this grant is really to increase our programming, particularly for the waste center and kids' club programming. Our waste center includes our dining area, it includes our reusable dishware program, and waste and recycling education. This year, we are changing our setup to make sure that it is accessible to everyone in the community and engage family and families and people of all ages with that shared goal of improving the appearance and emotional quality of Forest Grove. The second piece is our Power Produce or Pop Kids Club. This is a farmers' market-based kids program offered by Linguli that teaches children about the local food system through various activities, engaging with, like, fresh fruits and vegetables. It is a requirement for this program that we provide $2 to each kid that participates in that activity. And we really want to make sure that kids have that power of choice and get access to fresh food. And with this grant, we hope to increase that to $5 per child per activity. And I will pass it on to Francia.
Hi, Sage. Hi, my name is Francia Yera, and I am the Child Nutrition Coordinator here at Adelante. And last year, in collaboration with an early childhood education program, we organized the first kids' farmers' market in which we aim to educate children as early as two years old about the local food systems. The event emphasized the importance of fresh fruits and vegetables, informed food choices, and healthy snacking. Through interactive activities, children learn about nutrition, local food sources, farming, and basic money handling skills. The goal is to install, install healthy eating habits, fostering future generations of informed consumers, healthy adults, and environmental stewards. With the CIG funds, we hope to make the second kids' farmers' market a success. We wanted to continue our education outside of a classroom, and now we want to, we are piloting a program in which we are educating parents as well about nutrition. And we also give them an incentive to purchase fresh fruits and vegetables at our local farmers' market here in Forest Grove. And we know that some families are not aware of different types of produce, so we also want to give them the education with cooking demos of how to utilize the produce that they see in the local market. With that, we are serving about 119 individuals, representing 26 Latin families. And I'll give it to Bailey.
As we close out, we just want to make clear what our ask is. We are asking for the supplies and material costs, as well as the staff time, to provide our weekly Pop Kids Club activities, our monthly child nutrition and food demonstrations, our waste and recycling education activities, as well as our annual Kids Farmers Market in partnership with Pacific University, as well as increasing that kids' club token amount from $2 to $5. We really believe that this is important and aligns with the vision for this grant program as it increases access to recreational sites, increases environmental quality, as well as creating an inclusive and sustainable community space at our farmers' market and at our public event of the annual Kids Farmers Markets. We are connecting kids to their local farmers. We're connecting kids to knowing more about the produce and waste system that they are involved in. And we are setting up, you know, kids with healthy futures and with more autonomy to make decisions within our community spaces. And with that, we'll pause for any questions.
Any questions from the committee?
I have one question, and I can't remember the name of it right now, so I apologize. But it's my understanding that Adelante was going to start working to make culturally appropriate mental health services for youth. And I was just wondering if that's a layered part of this application?
Thanks so much for asking about that. So, yes, in everything that Adelante does, our hope is that at any point that you enter into our services, that you're connected to our other services. So we did recently open up our mental health clinic in Hillsborough, and through our child nutrition education program that is under our Health Equity Department, those two teams do collaborate to provide mental health services to our children and all of our families that we serve.
Great. Thank you. Okay, do you have a question? No, I think our time's up. Well, thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
I love the hype. I'm all about the hype. But I'm going to ask that we not applaud, just in the interest of time. But I do really appreciate it. You all are real good people, so thank you, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on.
Excellent.
Forest Grove Youth Lacrosse. You, yeah, sorry. In-person, come right up here. Sorry for not telling you that. Yeah, in-person applicants can just have a seat. You can sit down, speak into the microphone. Are both microphones working? Okay. Fingers crossed.
They were earlier.
I will be happy to do so. Does this work for you?
Yeah. Perfect. Okay.
Okay, hi, welcome. My name's Cara Lanning. I'm the secretary for the Board of Forest Grove Youth Lacrosse. And I'm just first want to shout out our amazing youth behind us. I think it's extraordinary and a testament to the character development that we're really shooting for in our club. And I think it's super important for them to see civic action in practice. And so thank you all for showing up. I'm here with fellow board members and the coach. And I acknowledge that our application is standing amongst giants within our community. We have extraordinary nonprofits that have applied for these funds. And I just wish everyone the best of luck regardless of award. We are committed to promoting the sport of lacrosse. It's fun, it's fast-paced, but more importantly, it's the first American sport. It has a documented history of going back to the 17th century in the United States. And we want to maintain its presence within our community. Lacrosse is recently gaining momentum and global recognition. It's now going to come back to the Summer Olympics in 2028, and it is considered the fastest-growing sport in the West Coast. The cost of participating in lacrosse is extraordinary, and that has resulted in only wealthy communities and people with lots of time and lots of cash to participate. Forest Grove Youth Lacrosse is committed to changing that narrative, and we're doing that right now. We are the only club in the Portland metro area that provides equipment to our youth at no cost whatsoever. We're also the cheapest club to participate in. Our registration fees are $100 to $150 a season. 50% of our players pay $0 to participate. This is extraordinarily important because we think that all kids should have access to sports, because it's really important for their physical health, but it's also really important for their emotional and social well-being. Also, lacrosse is super fun, and so the second you put a stick in their hands, they're hooked. I love that our club is co-ed. All genders are welcome, all abilities are welcome. We might be a little bit scrappy when we're at a tournament, but that gives us character and it helps us to just engage in what the point of recreation is, character development, and fun. So, we're trying to maintain our cost structure, which is low cost to families. And our priority is really in our ask to update our equipment. So the safety standards of our equipment have changed recently, and it's extraordinarily important that our kids are provided with the most up-to-date safety equipment. That's the largest majority of our ask. We also want to continue to increase the frequency and the quality of the community engagement programs that we already do. And so one idea we would love to do is like a free or donation at-will summer camp, so kids can just get a stick of hands and have some fun and be with their classmates in the middle of the summer. We also provide workshops throughout the winter with the high school, and we hope to continue to build out that program with Pacific University and other community partners. Our organization is worth investing in because we are able to provide a recreational team sport option for families at all income levels, and that's really, really important. I'm sure many of you are aware that some team sports are hyper-competitive or exclusive at school level. We are not that. We're also think it's extraordinarily valuable to have more sport options in Forest Grove for our youth, to retain them in sports longer for the health outcomes that are well documented. And when our kids come to us, we let them play. We let them build that character development, have so much fun on the field, and we have fun too. So the request of funds, again, we are requesting primarily to help support the replacement of our safety gear, continue community engagement, and continue to succeed in our low-cost model, providing about 50% or even more registration waivers for our kids in our community. Funding at any level is appreciated. And so we just welcome any guidance from the council or the review committee. If you have other sources that you think would be worthwhile pursuing, please let us know. We are really open-minded, and we're as committed as our students are. And so we appreciate your time, and I just really want to invite you for your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? I have a question.
Yeah.
How, how many people do you have participate now? And what are your plans to recruit more kids to play?
Yeah, thank you for your question. We currently have over 36 families, but many families have multiple children. Our age range is third through eighth grade. We would love to have way more. So I'm going to let Shane kind of talk about that plan there.
Is this one working?
Yeah.
Um, yes, like Cara said, we currently have, I believe, 36 families. And as she said, we have multiple kids in a lot of those families. As I've had kids in the sport for the last six years, multiple kids at all times. And as far as funding goes, we have been looking at, we've been carrying year to year in being able to supply newer equipment here and there. But it would be nice just to be able to replace it all and have them all on the safest equipment we could.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you again, and I really appreciate your consideration. I invite you just to read the testimonials. Like, the kids put a lot of effort into it. And so those testimonials are found on the brochure that was provided to you. And also, if you have other funding sources that you think would be better aligned with our ask, I just, I'm here to do whatever I can to keep this club going because I'm committed to the mission of our organization. So thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Hope Community Network. I love this island applies to. Like, all the fields.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Wenzel, city councillors, Metro Councillor Gonzalez, Ms. Salgado, Ms. Nunez. I hope you all can hear me. As the president
Hang on one minute. One minute. Mr. Orr coming up too.
Okay, yeah, as the president of Hope Community Network, I'm providing our opening remarks via Zoom while I visit family and grandchildren in Colorado. I apologize for my absence, but I made my travel plans based upon the original dates that's for these presentations. Please think of HCN as your local go-to organization that provides immediate relief to those in Forest Grove who need help. While we have limited resources, we have done much with little. And my notes were just erased. What happened here?
I think I can take over here.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Well, I just, yeah, okay, they came back up when you changed, changed it around. All right, look, we've paid for temporary short-term housing, purchased clothing, shoes, gasoline, rented U-Haul vehicles to move people's belongings, and we've done all that with businesses within Forest Grove. We've worked with the local police, Forest Grove Foundation. We've coordinated with the American Legion Post 2 to help the local veterans. And we've returned dozens of shopping carts to their own stores in the community. We're not big, we're not wealthy, we have big hearts and willing hands to help the distressed in Forest Grove. And I ask that you keep those things in mind as Tim presents our talking points.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Tim now.
Well, that's most of the talking points. No, I'm just kidding. Want to give some background to everybody. Many of you will probably recall that Hope Community Network was awarded a grant last year. Our mission and the reason for that grant proposal was to hire a house manager and to manage a house, whether leased or rented, for the homeless here. And he would, he or she would be there 24/7, and the renters would use vouchers to pay their stay. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to find a place that fills the bill for that. And we've even spoken with, not a lot, but several rental agencies. And the minute they find out that we are trying to house homeless with vouchers, they said, no, thanks. Okay, so consequently, we've changed our focus and mission this year. We have identified the last year or so, a real need here in Forest Grove that isn't being filled. We're painfully aware that there is not a rapid response agency or group here in Forest Grove that is willing and able to respond to the needs of homeless individuals who need immediate attention. Our, our board has, we are, we are six strong in our board right now. Mike is the president, Hope Kramer's the treasurer. She also had other plans, so she couldn't make it. And Stephanie Rose is up in Portland taking a class. So Dan Boone, formerly homeless, is on our board. I'm Tim, a board member, and a new member is Jody Blue. Athena Phillips is a non-board member, a trauma and mental health advisor. So our model is one of rapid response, helping the homeless individuals in immediate assistance in the city. It's really a unique approach, and it's something that does not currently exist here in Forest Grove. The proposed program in applying for the CIG grant is focused on providing immediate assistance to homeless individuals. Our volunteer board is, is a group that makes trips to where we're needed for mot, to get motel rooms, get people to motels, to pay for storing the homeless's goods that are, that are sitting out on the street and they don't have no place to put them. Sometimes just buying them gas and shoes, et cetera. I've got a five-page list of things. I've got a five-page list of things that we've done over the last year and a half, and at least 30 people that we've helped out 24/7. I'm getting, I'm getting phone calls and messages at 10 o'clock at night, at midnight, and things happen, we've got it done. Let's see, where can I go with that? Based on the hours spent by our volunteer board the last year, part-time services navigator, which is what we'd like to call this individual, would have to work 20 to 30 hours per week. So we're requesting a grant for $40,000 a year for three years to cover her/her salary plus materials and supplies and other surprise costs. That would include motel rooms that, that have to happen. That would include storing somebody's food, even, you know, silly things like, what, fixing a bicycle? So that's what we're looking for. Since our inception in the spring of 2022, we have an established track record with the Forest Grove City Government, County Commissioners, Metro Leaders, and Washington County SHS Leaders. I'm getting down to 49 seconds. We have measurable outcomes of this program is how many people we can help connect with services that lead to obtaining housing. We maintain up-to-date records of the people we assist, and we will continue to do so. We track our service instances, and we can identify at least 30 individuals, as I said, that we've helped in the last year. We see ourselves as adding value to the city's efforts to help the homeless navigate through situations requiring an immediate and compassionate response. In effect, we really see ourselves as partners with the city of Forest Grove. I think I've just chewed up all of my time. Well, my health.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Orr. Thank you for the presentation. Okay, next up, we're a little bit behind, but not too bad. So next up is the City Club of Forest Grove. Hi.
Hi.
Hassan?
Yes. Good evening, Council, Mayor, City Staff. On January 22nd of this year, Forest Grove Mayor, on behalf of the City Council of Forest Grove, signed a letter of support regarding the City Club of Forest Grove's application as an affiliate member for the Main Street Program. Since that time, the City Club of Forest Grove has become the managing entity of the affiliate-level Main Street Program for the City of Forest Grove. We are currently in the process of finalizing the partners of the Main Street Steering Committee and have begun framework discussions for this program. The Main Street Program will bring to Forest Grove the opportunities to decrease blight, upgrade buildings, create a live where you shop environment, increase placemaking, and a sustainable thriving downtown, all while monitoring and the success and the progress of the program. These changes will increase community involvement and commerce in Forest Grove and structure our town to, and structure our town to be an inviting location for tourism, as well as facilitate funding for other requests heard this evening. A strong and careful structured foundation will enable the program to be successful. The direct and indirect use of grant funds will be used to accomplish the following at a minimum. Proving success. Implementing quick win projects which have large visual impact. This will be accomplished by identifying small yet large impact goals such as art, maintenance, and beautiful vacation projects. Community enrichment, engagement, sorry. Engage and educate the community, including residents, businesses, nonprofits, and building owners to gain their support and partnerships in the form of membership dues, sponsorships, financial buy-in, in-kind contribution, resources, expertise, and talent. We will accomplish this by marketing visibility, educational seminars, mailers, newsletters, website marketing, and promotional events. Professional support. The Main Street Program gives us the network and the resource for success, but we must adjust them to meet our goals and our culture in Forest Grove. Website modification and management, marketing expertise, outreach specialists, CRM, and database tools as professional level are required to ensure a strong base for moving forward. This will be accomplished by contracting with experts to assist the website, CRM, marketing, and other database features necessarily, necessary for this function in this program. Likely, you have several organizations tonight that are requesting these funds. Today is an important decision, and this program's success will have a positive impact on our entire community, not just one organization, not just one subset of people. We're requesting you to continue to demonstrate your commitment and partnership to the Main Street Program with the action in the form of the full three-year grant. I appreciate your time, and I would love to take questions.
Okay, questions? I'll start with one question. So I was looking at the budget, and I was just curious, like, when it says projects, events, and enhancement, and that's like a considerable amount. It's 56, per year two estimate, it's $56,000. I was wondering if you could give me some examples for that? And then I was, oh, that's both in year one and year two, and then in year three, it's $76,000. So I'm just wondering if you can give me examples of what you're thinking with that?
So it's sticker shock, right?
Well, I was just, I mean, it's a, it's a new, it's a new budget from what you have, so I was just wondering.
So these budgets were based on other towns under $50,000, closest to $27,000 that we could possibly get. So that's really our best guess in the population of the town.
What, what would be those projects, like, events and enhancements? I'm just wondering, when you met with Main Street Program, did they say, like, examples of?
So if you look at the, the attachment that I sent last week, some of the enhancements are, like, there's two examples here of the before and after. Those are some of the enhancements, very simple ones, but it gets people interested because they, they're so well-done, and they, they're eye-catching. And there's also a video that was sent, it was thrown back into spam, I guess. There's a video on many examples in the state of Oregon of before and afters.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Gonzalez?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I just, I have a question, and in terms of the budget submitted, it shows a operational, for the previous calendar year was around $11,000, correct? $12,000 or so? Is that right?
Previous calendar year.
So I see 2023 City Club of Forest Grove Operational Report. I see a summary.
I wasn't here last year, so...
Oh, it's okay. I'm just looking at the, I can't quite list the page number, unfortunately.
Is it? Does it look like this?
It's page, well, nine of 19.
Has a little green, green tree on top, if it helps.
That's 2023 City Club of Forest Grove Operational Report.
Well, anyway, I'm just referencing that page, and I'm mindful of time. And, and then you go from, your estimates go from $35,000 to $100,000 to $122,000 to $147,000. The scaling is very, very drastic in terms of forecasting of financial growth. I wanted to get a sense of, of that. I recognize we're out of time. I just, uh...
Did you want me to answer?
Yes, please. Very quickly.
Okay. Basically, we are just starting. We are just, we've just hit the ground running as of last month. We had to wait until after the Heritage Conference was over.
Okay.
And we are just taking models and doing our best.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, next, I lost my... Okay, next up, we have, I'm not, Low No Astro Folklore of Washington County. Sorry if I butchered that too much.
Hi there. Hi, Councilors, hi, committee members. So I actually missed the opportunity to actually, to attach the slideshow, basically PowerPoint, it's like a slideshow. So can I actually distribute to the committee member here?
Yes.
Hi, everyone, again. My name is Jin Wei Nu. I am the Secretary, I'm the one of the Directors of this awesome organizations called Low No Astro Folklore. I'm here actually today to present our program to the committee to, hopefully that you guys can help us find a more, more permanent home so that we can actually expand our impact to the community. So as you can see in the program that we, the title of our program is actually Folklorico Education Program for the youth, adult, and senior. Okay, so little, little, little quick background here. The folklorico is like, one is a specific terminology to describe a, this kind of a dance art from Mexican folklore. It's actually a combination of the traditional Mexican folk dance with the influence of ballet and Western contemporary dance, and then that become a dance art form is called folklorico dance. So our mission, the mission of organization, of our organization is to provide a healthy, safe, and inspirational environment in which children and young adults are given the opportunity to learn about the Mexican cultural and history through the traditional dance art. So here, you might want to ask, so why so specific? Because actually, according to 2000 census, 20, a close to 20% of the Forest Grove active population is actually Latino Mexican populations. So a lot of the youth in this communicate, in this community, they, they longing for this kind of opportunity to, to learn something that more endear to their, their roots and their, 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 their love of, for that, for that art form over there. So we, this is, this is not a new, brand-new program, just to a little bit clarification here. Our program actually currently is present, is actually store, is actually host in-house in Forest Grove School District. It's called Mexican, Mexican in La Pia. So this program currently is actually running in the school and to mainly actually supply the, to actually provide this actually folkloric educational opportunity for the kids from K-2 all the way up to the young adults. What we do, what, what we actually looking for here is actually opportunity to actually expand our influence for the community, to expand the, to make this actually opportunity more, make it more available to the broader community inside the city of Forest Grove. And our, mainly that what we asking is actually to ask for help, to help our funding to start actually looking for a more permanent location in the sense that instead of in the school, to find a more, lease a facility that's actually more equipped with dense, dense-oriented setup, because in the school, what we can only use is a gym, okay? So in the long term, that's actually not healthy for the kids, because this form of dance art, including a lot of sabateado, in the, and essentially is actually clogging. So we do a lot of heel work and stomach work, and that in the long term is not good for the kid's health if constantly in a asphalt or cement ground. And, and also, it's a dance art. It's like a dance art. We have a Forest Grove dance art in the community. It's actually has a lot of impact for this, for this city of Forest Grove already, and as part of the community, for the Mexican community or the Latino community, we should have something, be able to, to support some, some studio like that to, to, to actually satisfy the goal of the city. Councilor's goal is actually to be more inclusive and also diverse for the community to grow. And our goal is actually to benefit the youth and then the seniors, low-income persons and/or underserved populations. And that's actually including, started right now, we have actually mainly in the youth and young adults, but our, the other director, Mano Ramos, actually, is actually teaching senior program as well in Central Gondola. But I don't see why can we have this kind of opportunity here for the seniors in the city of Forest Grove, because that will, with a separate studio location, will be more flexible. It would be may cater our program to what the community needs inside the city of Forest Grove, and that's actually what we're here trying to ask for that. So to sum it up, our, we actually has a lot of collaboration with Forest Grove High School and Forest Grove Art Festival, which just happened, and we are actually looking forward to expand our impact in the community. And then we believe, and because we are art form, we also apply for other, other, in the long run, we'll be able to sustain ourselves by actually, by other, other funding and also other, other form of income as well, so that way we can continue and with the kickoff from the support from City of Forest Grove. And to sum it up at the end, we're gonna have our final showcase. So at the end of the brochures over there is our poster. I invite everybody to come to our show to see what young people we have created and how they can do, what they can achieve. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we, our time is up, so we're not gonna ask any questions? So we have a six-minute time? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And thank you for the presentation, too.
Okay, so next up, our topic is essential services for survival, survivors of family violence. I think this is those.
Hi, everyone.
Hello, Rachel.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. I'll try to keep this relatively brief for you. I've included in your packet information about the Family Justice Center and what we do and the number of folks that we serve. For those of you that were here, just a couple weeks ago, actually, you heard that we served 95 survivors from Forest Grove with 177 services, and we know that only about 30% of survivors will identify where they come from when they are seeking services. So it is potentially an underrepresentation. We are applying for the Community Impact Grant Application as a collaborative grant with Adelante Mujeres to deepen our, not only our partnership, but our ability to provide culturally-specific services at the Family Justice Center. Hispanic and Latino community make up 42%, which is our largest single population at the Family Justice Center, and so we want to be able to offer those culturally-specific and linguistically-specific healing services. And so how we would pair that with working in Forest Grove, we would leverage our partnership with Adelante Mujeres for them to provide services in a survivor-safe space at the Family Justice Center, but we would also utilize culturally-specific peer outreach with support from the grant here in Forest Grove to try to make an access point for survivors here. We would also work in partnership with Ride Connection, who can offer free door-to-door transportation for survivors in Forest Grove to the Family Justice Center so that they can have access to not only all of our services, but specifically the Beyond Trauma Program run by Adelante Mujeres. That would allow for the survivors not only to access the culturally-specific, but even if they were not Hispanic and Latino survivors, they would be able to access the Beyond Trauma Program, providing healing and long-term sustainability for survivors that access the Family Justice Center from Forest Grove. And I'll leave you guys time for questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions? I'm gonna look online, too, so I don't see any of my Zoom participants with hands raised. Anyone on the panel? I don't think, no?
I don't have any. I just wanted to thank you for applying, and this is a senior application come through the, the CIG program, I think reflects the, we cast a pretty wide net in terms of the kind of applications that we, that we could receive with this new scope, and it's just the partnership is, is, is great to see. So seeing that we have time to, to comment with the, with the shorter presentation, I thought I'd, I'd offer that, that feedback, and thank you for the really detailed application.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I, one of the things that stood out to me about your application was the, the partnership with Adelante for the Beyond Trauma subcontract. Do you wanna take, since you have some time, do you wanna explain how that works? Because that, Adelante is local to Forest Grove, too, so I think that's another layer.
Yeah, so we have been working to build our partnership with Adelante for over a year now, and with this, with this allocation, what they would be able to do is offer year-round programming. So we've had the Beyond Trauma Program maybe once... the curriculum. When you have somebody that you've built a relationship with, they, they become a culturally specific mentor and that makes a really big difference. And then with this, we'd also be able to come into Forest Grove as either culturally specific peers that we had out here or staff members that could visit the Adelante Program, that could table at the markets, that could just have a much better presence in order to build that out in both places. So Adelante could build their presence out with the Family Justice Community and then we could build it with the Adelante Community.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, then we're going to let you go. Thanks so much. And I have way too many papers. Next up, we're going to move on to the Forest Grove Cornelius Chamber of Commerce.
They are the backbone of our economic vitality. Buenas tardes, good afternoon. My name is Claudia Yacos. I am the Executive Director of the Forest Grove Cornelius Chamber of Commerce and I'm here to address inclusive critical gaps in support for small businesses, particularly within the vibrant Latino Hispanic community, the second largest in Oregon. The nearest small business development center is 26 miles away, leaving many entrepreneurs without accessible resources. Furthermore, the nearest SBDC offering Spanish language support is located in Gresham, adding another layer of challenge for our community members. Cities like Tigard recognize similar needs and initiatives. They have allocated funds to supplement the cost for businesses and residents seeking business training and support services. Our small business community, despite their resilience, face significant barriers to success. Limited access to resources, language barriers and a lack of tailored support hinder their ability to thrive and contribute fully to our local economy. The Centro de Desarrollo Empresarial, or our hub is what I like to call it, is poised to fill this crucial gap in support. Consider the story of Erica, a determined entrepreneur who approached our chamber seeking assistance to realize her dream of launching her own cleaning business. Erica, like many aspiring entrepreneurs, felt overwhelmed and uncertain about where to start. Over six months with the one-on-one guidance with me, I am a small business owner, have been for over 25 years, she was able to transition from dreaming to thriving. Just four months ago, she officially launched her cleaning company, marketing a significant milestone in her journey. We navigated the labyrinth of state and city licenses, tapping into resources such as grants, small business loans to propel her vision forward. Additionally, by joining the chamber, we assisted her in creating her professional website, designing business cards and tapping into network opportunities. I am taking this a step further. Erica is now working with me on certificate, or getting certified as a woman, as a minority woman owned small business through the state of Oregon, further amplifying her business reach and impact. Moreover, she's eagerly awaiting the launch of a leadership cohort program, underscoring her commitment to continuous growth and development. Erica's success story alongside her husband's journey in launching his own business exemplifies the transformative, transformative power of our hub. And it's really stories like Erica that inspires, inspire us and reaffirm the profound impact our project can and will have in our community. Our project is not just about short-term gains, it's about laying an equitable and inclusive foundation for long-term economic and prosperity. When our businesses succeed, our entire community thrives. Our activities will be strategic and impactful over the next three years of this grant. We'll establish the hub within the Chamber of Commerce. And we are very excited about having people have a space, you know, to work one-on-one versus working with me on my computer. And this really does embody the commitment to innovation and true inclusivity. It signifies our dedication to thinking outside the box and daring to dream beyond our boundaries. With the support of this grant, along with your backing, we're confident that our initiative will make a tangible impact in the existing business community. We believe in the power of true and intentional partnerships and collaboration, recognizing that by working together, we really do build a strong web of skillsets and resources in our area. So each success story we've encountered really does underscore the profound impact of the collective action and I would say visionary leadership. We want to extend, you know, a thank you to all of you. It's a really hard decision, but we want to thank you for your service. And I'm going to leave you with what I started out with, which is without a strong business community, we don't have a thriving downtown or city. These businesses and these entrepreneurs are the backbone of our economic vitality. And I will turn it over to council and to committee for any questions.
Any questions for the chamber? Marissa, are you still with us online? I just don't see you, so I don't know if you have questions or not, and I don't want to leave you out.
Yep, I'm here, I'm listening and I don't have any questions right now, thank you.
Okay, just let me know, just double checking. Anyone on the panel? Okay, I don't see any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia.
So we're going to move to washing county bikes.
And then I'm Christina Fisher, but our executive director is joining us on Zoom. Just want to make sure we get Joe pulled up.
Sorry, thank you.
No, that's okay. It looks like you guys are working on it.
I think we may have missed the Elks Lodge. It's, it's not on my... Oh, I skipped it. I totally skipped one. I'm sorry, Alice. We're going to do, we're going to do yours. I don't know, sorry.
Okay, no, that's okay.
The mayor makes lots of mistakes and thank you for your grace.
We all do. Does anybody want a copy? Or you guys have it?
Can you guys see me or hear me?
We can, thank you.
Excellent.
Well, I'm Christina Fisher. I'm so grateful to be here and we're so excited to talk with you guys about what we're doing. I am with Wasco. Well, you know us as Wasco, we're also Reborn Bikes. We've been doing work here in Forest Grove for about 10 years. Our mission is to create more equitable, livable communities and combat climate change by putting more people on refurbished bikes and giving them bike safety skills. So as I said, we've been doing that here in Forest Grove for 10 years. We've been running bike camps here in the city. We've been partnering with the Title I Schools for distribution of bikes to those underserved populations that need it and a variety of things. We're hoping that this funding today can help us expand our reach. We know there are a lot of folks here and a large need in Forest Grove that we haven't been able to reach yet. More partnerships, more opportunities to do more bike rodeos and lots more people that need bikes for that sustainable transportation. So we are excited for this opportunity. We have a pilot program we've successfully been doing with Metro at the Oregon City Transfer Station. And that's what we're applying for today to talk about that impact that we've had there and how we would mirror that program here in Forest Grove. I'm going to hand it over to Joe.
Thank you, Christina. And thank you, council for, for having us. And we have been in your community at their corn roasts. Many of you have probably seen us giving away hundreds of bikes at the corn roast, at the different schools. We run our summer camps out of the Church of Christ location right down there. And we have a four-story building now, the, the bank building on Main and Pacific where we moved through, in the entire state, we moved through about eight to 10,000 bikes and that's one of our warehouses where we do it. We have a lot of local folks from the Rotary Club to the public of Forest Grove, helping us in there clean and refurbish and collect bikes to be able to read, to distribute them out to the community. Every kid and adult that gets a bike, whether it's a refugee, a child from a Title I school, a, a family getting back on their feet, someone from Exposed Hope that's getting out of human trafficking, getting a bike to work, we give them a bike, a lock, a light and a helmet and safety training. And what we've really reaching out to you guys for tonight is the program we've been doing with Metro at the transfer stations has been successful beyond our wildest dreams. We're able to capture and collect and refurbish and then get back out in the world bikes that would have been otherwise melted down or thrown away into the landfill. We're keeping a lot of CO2 out of the, the atmosphere and we're really taking those bikes and it's not a goodwill situation where we take a bike in the front door and we send it out with a little wipe down. We refurbished those bikes with a 16-point safety check and we say, give it to somebody as if it's somebody you care for and love. And every one of the kids at our summer camps in Forest Grove and beyond get a bike that fits them. And we're just excited because the Metro program in Oregon City, we're pulling out 200 bikes a week and about 120 of those were actually able to fully restore and get out into the world. The other 80 we're, we're stripping for parts and putting them on other bikes. So the program that you guys see that we're asking for is material needs, transportation, labor and all the costs associated with getting those bikes out to those kids and adults in Forest Grove. And Christine, if you want to add anything else, I know they have the packets there with them. We're just excited to continue our work in Forest Grove and to really let the folks of Forest Grove know that we are here to stay and, and here to grow with you guys. And so I'm going to just open it up for questions.
Okay, questions? Counsel Gonzalez.
Thanks, Mary Wenzel. Yeah, I have a question. Yeah, thank you for highlighting your partnership with, with Metro at the Oregon City at the transfer station there. For, for here at Forest Grove, I'm wondering, have you engaged at all with waste management? And just the possibility of the nuances of, of the private transfer station and, and, and what they're thinking about, you know, having, having you on site?
Yes, we've, we've talked with the folks at Metro and with the transfer station, we've applied and we're, we're reaching out. They, the, what I'm understanding is there's a great excitement to continue throughout all of the transfer stations. The main one in, in Portland, your transfer station out here, the, the four or five that are available, we just can't scale fast enough and we're trying to be very deliberate about how we roll these out. And we know that we're not going to be talking about as many bikes from Forest Grove, but that's okay because we, we have so many volunteers and so many people to work on them that our, our need is to just keep those bikes out of the landfill and keep them out of the transfer station, as many as we can get. We don't feel we have a set number that we have to have for the program to be successful. And yes, we have talked with them.
Yeah, and I would just add that with the warehouse already here in Forest Grove, it's very easy for us to access those and get those into this community because they're already here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, guys. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, Alice, for waiting for me and giving me grace with my mess ups. Will, will the Elks please come up?
I'm with the Forest Grove Elks and in essence, you might say I'm representing the Forest Grove School District for their low income and homeless program. Through my grant writing, I gave you how our students are chosen, where the food comes from basically and how it is distributed. I have some of my Elks and volunteers here today with me. They do a commendable job. And this year, to date, we have served what, 4,300 meals since the first of September through the school year. It averages 136 meals a week. Tomorrow, we will be serving 165 backpacks, just to let you know a little bit as far as the severity of the issue. And I, some of the issue that I think we have is genderfication because we've got increased housing costs with the new demands for housing and prices in the community. Some of our low-income residents may face displacement due to rising rents and evictions. Neighborhood change is also going to, we're going to need to address issues there. Policymakers can consider strategies such as preserving existing affordable housing, fostering inclusive neighborhoods for change. It's essential to strike a balance between growth and equity to ensure that urban development benefits everyone. How do we broaden our charitable base? Broadening the charitable base involves expanding the pool of donors and supporters. Diversify outreach channels such as social media, email campaigns, events and partnerships. Segmentation, understand our existing donors and segment them based on their demographics. Corporate partnerships, we need to work on corporate partnerships in order to be able to have a program that is going to be sustainable, instead of me coming back and seeing you each year. That's why I am applying for the CIG grant for a three-year program. We also hope to have a strategic plan so that we can solve the majority of the low-income food distribution. Peer-to-peer fundraising, encouraging current donors to become advocates. Storytelling, sharing impact stories about our organization's work. And then leading to success. Community solidarity plays a vital role in the addressing of hunger. When people come together, they can achieve remarkable success in fighting food insecurity. And here's some of the ways that we can do it. We can have a collective effort. When community members unite, they pull resources, time and expertise, this collaborative effort allows for more efficient and effective solutions. Food drives and donations, local initiatives, advocacy and awareness, support networks. Remember, together we can nourish our communities and build a hunger-free world. Very important. We have a, a good chance here in Forest Grove. Your former president of the city council, Tom Johnston, used to come in the Elks and say, oh, I just came back from a city meeting, city councils all over the United States and we have got some plans for the future. And to this day, we are still developing some of the plans that he helped institute. We have a vision for the future that is creating an unbreakable chain. Awareness, collaboration, food distribution, sustainable solutions, advocacy, all are part of it. A very key importance is involving youth in our community. Youth can play a crucial role in fighting hunger within the community. Volunteering, having the youth volunteer in food banks, shelter, community kitchens and hands-on advocate, raise awareness of hunger-related issues. Educate by teaching more about sustainable food practices. Organize events and fundraisers, collaborate partnerships with schools, businesses and nonprofits. A model for other communities. We need to assess the data collection, stakeholders engagement, holistic solutions. We need to broaden what we already have started within our community. Sustainability, replicability are all, we have to document the model's successes and challenges and lessons and learn. Yes, you've seen me before, seven out of the last eight years asking for assistance. The CAIP grant would be ideal vehicle to feed children and grow plan. The CIP grant would be ideal vehicle to feed children and grow plan that will work with the future. Getting a lesser amount of money is still needed and we can still try to develop a sustainable plan with the CEP grant. More students, more challenges. Like I say, tomorrow, we have 165. This next year, at this time, we may have 200. I'm hoping that we can start and convene a task force, work with the community, and have a three-year strategic plan that will work and solve the hunger problem.
Thank you, Alice. You made it in the six minutes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are, first of all, my peers, did I miss any, like, before we move on?
You got a call for this one.
Did I miss anything? Okay, so how do we want to proceed? One idea that staff recommended was that we maybe take a minute and then everyone shares their top three and we tally, all like tally them up and then we can discuss the top three? Or is there a different way you would like to deliberate? That was just one approach.
I actually had a question on two of them that I thought maybe Juan Carlos might know the answer to.
Oh, maybe.
I don't know. Maybe everybody else says, or maybe I'm completely disconnected. So with the Forest Grove Elks Lodge helping the homeless and youth and then the Hope Community Network with with homeless, does Washington County, like way back, I remember Washington County got a balloon of money and it was supposed to help out with homelessness. Is that something completely different? And that this doesn't qualify?
Counselor, thank you for asking. There is a great deal of resources in Washington County for homelessness with supportive housing. Specifically, Hope Community Network does mention this in their grant application. The county went through like a vendor procurement program and Hope Community Network has not been able to become one of the service providers at the county. So they have not been able to access, and I don't believe the Elks Lodge is a provider. That's not to say that they are not able to refer families to organizations that are service providers through Community Connect, completing Phase Ones and things like that. But anyway, I could go through a deep rabbit hole there.
I get it. You kind of have to be connected.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there's a, the county's created a single point of entry in which, you know, families can go through. But as you know, there's a lot of need and so there's wait lists and things like that. But yes, that's kind of the answer to the SHS program that has been designed.
Any further questions or clarifying on the committee's part? Oh, Council President Rippey, I see you.
Thank you. I think it goes to a follow-up with what Donna was saying. And that is, it seems to be based upon the Hope Community Network's presentation that there are gaps that exist. Even with the Metro and the county services that are provided, they're not meeting all the gaps. And I'm curious as to why the county isn't trying harder to fill those gaps. And it seems also that those are rather urgent things, calls in the midnight, calls for this, that, and the other thing. And if there are needs, then those things probably need to be addressed by the county. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, is there a consensus on how we want to do deliberations? Do you guys want to take two minutes to kind of tally up your score sheet? And then we'll come back and tally up our top three and then discuss those top three. Is that fine? I'm just trying to figure out a way because we do have a time limit or is there a different approach?
Yeah, we should do that and try and.
Yeah, let's do it. Two minutes. You only do once the I, so it's a three-year, $40,000 each year. Out of the ones we just heard.
This is going to be too hard.
When I first got elected to give grant money away, I thought this would be the best part of the job. And it's not because there's so many people deserving, so many groups deserving. It's just hard. It's just a hard thing. So I just again want to say thank you to all the people, like really to everyone in this room, volunteers. Every single person I'm staring at is volunteering for the betterment of our community in the capacity that you can. And so that is such value to the city of Forest Grove and I want to, you know, say thank you. Okay, so are we ready? Does anyone need more time?
I'm going to start with the committee members that are on Zoom. So I'm going to go with Marissa first.
Oh, no. Wait to call me out.
I wasn't trying to. It's just I can't see you, so I didn't want to forget you. That was like my strategy.
No, that makes sense. That works. I apologize for not being able to be there in present. I just, I couldn't. And I don't have any other help, so I like that you said we're doing what we can. So in regards to this, for one, it's essential services for survivors of family violence. This is really hard. My number two is Folklorico Education Program for Juvenile.
Which one was that?
And my Folklorico Education Program.
Yes, thank you.
And then my third one is between Adelante Mujeres.
Okay. So Marissa, Adelante Mujeres?
No.
No?
I guess my third one would be Hope House.
Hope House.
And then.
The Hope Community?
Yeah, Hope Community.
Got it. So just to clarify, Hope Community Network, Ballet Folklorico, and Family Justice Center.
Family Justice Center, Ballet Folklorico, and the Hope House. Yes, and it is a really hard choice because I want to do all of them equally. But I do think that they target different populations and that is my thought behind that decision, if that makes sense.
Yeah, you're good. Thank you very much. Council President Rippey.
I would put down the Chamber, the City Club, and Adelante.
Thank you. Counselor Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. So, yes, as I said, this was very difficult. Number one, the Family Justice Center.
Thank you.
Number two, the Hope Community Network. And third, the Folklorico.
Thank you. Counselor Ewing.
Yes, thank you. And I would mention to my colleagues, this process has evolved so much from the five terms that I've been, where there was no process to now where there is so much diversity and input. So I appreciate greatly the evolution that these dollars have afforded our community. My first choice would be Domestic Violence Center. Also, I would then do the Forest Grove Chamber and then Adelante.
Thank you. Ms. Nunez. You have to press, yeah, press and then talk.
As I talk?
You have to hold it.
Number one, the Folklorico Education Program. Number two, Centro de Desarrollo, the Business Development Center. And then number three, Adelante Mujeres, Farmers Market for Kids.
Thank you. Counselor Marshall.
Adelante, Family Justice Center, and Elks.
I'm going to go with mine. Adelante, Family Justice Center, and the Elks. Hang on, let me do Elks, Family Justice, and Elks. Okay, Counselor Gonzalez.
All right. Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I had two tied for first. But I'll just list my top three. I had Adelante, I had WashCo Bikes, and I had the Centro de Desarrollo, the Chamber.
Counselor Martinez.
So I have actually the Elks Lodge, Hope Community Network, and the Chamber.
Okay, so the scoring is six for Adelante, three for Hope Community, one for City Club, three for Ballet Folklorico, five for Family Justice, five for the Chamber, and three for the Elks. So our top three, all, like, so the top three is six for Adelante, five for Family Justice Center, and five for the Chamber. So you want to, it's, are you, you're not, she's not voting on this?
Didn't you refuse? I mean, if the City Club is out, I don't see any reason why I can't vote for the top three.
Can staff help direct? Well, we haven't, we don't know what's out. I don't know. Staff?
If City Club is out of consideration by all of you, then she can participate because there's no perceived comp, I mean, there's no comp.
Is the City Club out? Or is there consensus that the City Club is not going to get awarded the CIG?
Or is there discussion that's needed?
That's what I was trying to figure out.
Well, we all, I'm sorry, we all did our first top three and I think we received only one vote, City Club.
Correct. Okay, so is it fine if we take that off our list? Okay, we're going to take that off the list. Okay, so you want to say what your top three?
Um, my top three was Adelantes, Essential Services for Survivors of Family Violence, and Weekend Program for Forest Grove School District.
The backpack, the Elks, okay. So now we have seven for Adelante, six for Family Justice, and five for the Chamber. Those are the top three. And then the fourth would be the Elks. Okay, so this is the CIG, three-year, $40,000 a year. Let's open it for discussion on those three. Marissa.
Are we able to switch our votes so that I can, I'd rather have the Elks than the Chamber? And add my vote to, if it's between those three, are we able to do that?
Yeah, let's just have a discussion between those four then. Is that fine with the committee? So it's Adelante, Family Justice, the Elks, and the Chamber would be what we're discussing right now. So if anyone has comments, one where the Counselor.
Yes, thank you. I really appreciate the Elks and truly is a difficult decision. However, I do feel the Chamber is trying to establish something that is so much more long-term for business people in this community. Not that I don't want to feed children, that is a top priority. But I also know in order to feed children, we have to have a healthy economy. And we have to have a healthy business base. I think we have seen that, especially during the recession. It was our small businesses, it was our entrepreneurship. It was those types of organizations and groups that came together to bolster the whole community. So I really hope that we'll consider how much of an impact that particular support for the Chamber will go for new entrepreneurs who are wanting to start businesses for really a sustainable economic base. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think what, as, you know, and Counselor Gonzalez, my co-chair, correct me if I'm wrong, but if anyone would like to weigh in if they feel strongly about one of these four, let's do that now. And then after we hear any discussion on these four, let's narrow it down to our top one. Because it's one grant for CIG. Counselor Gufferson.
I just want to call out that I had the Essential Services and Adelante as a tie. And so I just wanted to call that out. And then I wanted to make comment that I believe that the Chamber's the Chamber's proposal may be a little bit redundant to programs that we already have, but I do not know. It just feels like it's a redundant program that maybe needs partnership.
Okay. Counsel President Rippey.
So to answer that question, no, it's not a redundant. The Business Hub, the Business Development Hub, used to be located at the PCC campus and was moved, the closest is now in Gresham, I believe. And it is a critical surface that is sorely needed here in Western Washington County. And I believe, along with what Counselor Ewing was saying, that this is really a new program. And their collaboration in their, in their presentation and their application, they will be collaborating with Adelante Mujeres, Pacific University. They will be bringing a number of different organizations together to serve not only the small businesses in this town, in this city, but in the Western Washington County. And again, I'd like to reiterate what Counselor Ewing said, a strong economy is going to do more for the people in this area than perhaps some of the other programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel President Marissa.
Hi, I just wanted to say I feel like with the, with the Elks, it targets a more a more vulnerable population. And it also affects the children in a lot of other ways if they're not being fed. It affects their education and so on. I feel like if I had to pick between feeding children and the Chamber, I feel like the Chamber can still work on those partnerships and come back next year and kind of let us know how that is going. I would like to see more equitable practices with the Chamber. I still feel that there's a lack of diversity in the work that they've done. And I would just like to learn more about how they are going to, to show that they are targeting everyone in that community, like the business. um, everyone in that community, like the, the business, um, aspect of it, but how are they specifically being equitable and reaching those communities and people who are at a disadvantage? And I'm not sure that I've seen that yet. Um, and I would like to know more about that before I, um, choose them over the Elks. I don't know if that made any sense, but...
Good comments. Thanks, Marissa. So, yeah, go ahead, Counsel.
I guess just to, um, just to add my, my final thoughts here and, uh, um, you know, it's, uh, I'm not, I'm not a parent, but I feel like I have to pick between one of my kids, you know, that, uh, because these are just four incredibly, uh, impactful, meaningful, uh, programs and organizations in our community. It feels, uh, it feels really hard to, to feel like, uh, three of these won't be getting funding. Um, you know, if I had to winnow it down to two, um, it would be down to, uh, the Adelante Mujeres Farmers Market or the, the Chamber, uh, uh, business program that they wanna create. And when I have to really, really test myself and winnow it down a little bit more, I, 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 I see the work that, Claudia has done, uh, in the last year, and I think that, uh, she's, uh, earned, uh, a grant investment to take that work a little bit farther. Uh, and, uh, I, I would put my, my final vote on the Chamber. I recognize the comments that folks have, have made, um, uh, throughout the, you know, throughout this process. Um, but, uh, I, 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 I just think that in terms of, you know, and we're really talking about marginal benefit, marginal impact, talking about splitting hairs here, I just really feel confident that the Chamber, the leadership that they have right now, they're really gonna stretch that three-year grant and really gonna make, uh, really gonna make the most of it and gonna duplicate it over, over time.
Thank you. So, yes, Ms. Nunez.
I, I appreciate the comments that you just shared. Um, I think that Adelante Mujeres also, as, as a nonprofit, they have easier access to a lot more grants that focus on sustainability. So I think that giving the Chamber this opportunity would be really beneficial for them and for our, our community.
Okay, so is, does the committee feel like they've, there's been enough discussion to, to vote on their final one and all tally it up? Or is there any more discussion? Are you guys ready to say the one, and then we'll add up the, is that fine? Marissa.
I just, I just have one more thought. It, I would just like to say, it sounds like the Chamber is a big, um, where, a big direction where, where people here are moving. And my only feedback to that is if that is where we end up going, I would just like to hear from them how they're going to try to be equitable and give more to those that need more, give less to those that need less. And I just would really like to see those practices, and come to life, and be intentional. Um, like I said, I don't feel like I've seen that in our community yet. I don't, but this is a, but it would be a good point for them to take away and hopefully bring that back to us and show us that proof. That would be my only, um, feedback for them.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
I would agree with Marissa on that, and I, I still, like, I really feel like the Services for, for the Survivors of Family Violence, that's, um, very, very important, and it's a great program. Um, and I think that Adelante Mujeres, they're, they're really on a good roll, and I think continuing that by helping them and giving them this bump would be beneficial for them.
Okay.
And it's split for me on those two, like, it's so close.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go and add, I'm gonna go and, I'm gonna start, well, can I, I was gonna start with you and do it reverse.
Start with me.
Of last time. Does anyone, well, Counsel Gonzalez, I, did you, I felt like you did in your comment, so I kinda marked you, but...
Would it, would it help to make a motion? Do we wanna vote on a motion, or do you just wanna do a tally against two?
We're just gonna do another vote until we...
It's up to you.
Narrow it down?
Yeah, I mean, if, yeah.
Do we wanna do the one and two now?
What if, what if we all just say our top, our top one at this point?
Right, that's what I was gonna, okay. That's what I was hoping for, is we could do our top one.
Yeah. You wanna do a roll call again with top one?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I wanna start with you, though.
Okay.
Counsel Gustafson.
Um, I would say Adelantes.
Okay. Counsel Martinez.
I'll say the Chamber.
Okay. Counsel Gonzalez.
Uh, the Chamber.
Okay. I gotta say that you switched me. I was gonna go for Adelante, but I think what Leslie said, Ms. Nunez said about nonprofits and the ability to earn, um, and I, this wasn't even in my top three, but I'll, I'm gonna go with the Chamber. Counsel Marshall.
Elks.
Okay.
And Chamber.
Okay, and then let's go, Counsel Ewing.
Chamber.
Okay. Uh, Counsel Valenzuela.
Chamber as well.
Okay. Counsel President Rippey.
What did she say? I didn't catch.
She said Chamber as well.
Uh, Chamber.
Okay, and Marissa.
Adelante.
Okay. So the results are two for Adelante, seven for the Chamber, and one for the Elks. So is there, do I, is there any more discussion, or do I hear a motion? Do we do a motion for a work session? No, it's just consensus, right? It's just consensus.
I think, I think generally our process...
This is not a work session. This is actually a meeting of the committee, so you will actually be asked to take an action tonight and award the grant.
Okay.
I think seeing general, general agreement through this democratic process that we've engaged in deliberation, uh, healthy disagreement and agreement, I'll make a motion to award a CIG grant to, uh, the Forest Grove Chamber for their Centro de Desarrollo Empresarial Program.
I second that.
Okay, there is a motion by Counsel Gonzalez and a second by Counsel President Rippey to support the Chamber's application for the CIG. Uh, let's do a roll call vote since it's dealing with money for three years.
Counsel Gustafson. Are we voting on the, the fact that we just voted?
No, we just had a motion.
Okay, got it. Yes.
Counsel Martinez.
Yes.
Counsel Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counsel Marshall.
Yes.
Committee Member Nunez.
Yes, say yes.
Counsel Rippey.
Yes.
Counsel Valenzuela.
Yes.
Counsel Ewing.
Yes.
Committee Member Marissa.
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel.
Aye. So the CEP Committee, in a vote of seven to zero, has awarded the Forest Grove Cornelius Chamber of Commerce the Community Impact Grant. Okay, thank you very much. So we're gonna, so I just wanna do a little quick check-in with time. So now there was some that's, so we have one, two, three, four, five CEP applications. Four of the ones that presented are also CEP. So the Family Justice Center, the Elks Lodge, the Wa, Washington County Bikes will move down to CEP. Do, does the committee agree, what I am asking, I'm just gonna be very blunt, can we move forward with this, knowing that we will probably run ten to fifteen minutes over time, but we will complete this process tonight, and we will start our city council meeting a little bit later? Is there consensus from the committee to do that? On Zoom?
Yeah, fine. Yes, yes.
Thank you so much. Okay, I really do appreciate that. We were just about eighteen minutes behind schedule.
Mayor, I have a quick question, not to delay. Uh, now that we're moving on to CEP and these grants are moving from CIG to CEP, are they, are they the exact same grant, just scaled down in half, or are they new grants?
Yes, we, the, we, our staff verified with them, verified that with them, so.
The same, but scaled down.
Their same scaled down?
They would just do, they would just, you know, they would just do less, so.
With, with one exception, the Hope Community Network, the Hope Community Network is a different project. So they are being re-interviewed for the CEP grant as well, because it's an actual different project. The other ones were the same project.
Okay, all right, thank you. I just wanted to, to confirm, and I know it's all in the packet, but wanted to see if we could expedite it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Can I have the Hope Community Network? And then do we need to move Mr. Pearl to a panelist to do an introduction, or is Mr. Orr doing all of it this time?
Mr. Orr is doing all of it.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, once again, I'm Tim Orr, and hi again, everybody here. Um, the goal that we're proposing here in the Hope, uh, Community Network is to place a handwashing station, porta potty, and dumpster on the parcel of land designated by the city as a place where homeless can camp overnight. By placing and maintaining sanitation facilities in the parking lot owned by the city of Forest Grove, identified as a place where people can camp overnight, if there is no shelter space available, we are providing a public restroom. The city currently does not have any public restrooms that are open twenty-four hours a day. Having a public restroom will improve the environmental quality of our community. Offering a well-maintained and lockable from the inside public restroom and a handwashing station, as well as a dumpster for garbage, will improve the safety of residents of Forest Grove. Handwashing has proven to be a safeguard against the spread of disease. Trash being collected in a dumpster is a safer alternative to trash being left on the sidewalks and the roads of the town. The grant funds would be used for rental and maintenance of a porta potty. Key here is maintenance, handwashing station, and a dumpster. This would benefit youth, seniors, and low-income persons and underserved populations. I'm thinking in general here, we're talking about the homeless. Any assistance to people who are less fortunate and experiencing homelessness benefits underserved populations. A significant portion of homeless people are vets. Homelessness affects people of color at a higher rate than their proportion to this population. Homeless individuals are low-income. This project would start July one this year and be complete June first of 2025. The project's scope is all residents of Forest Grove will benefit by providing a public restroom, handwashing station, and garbage the city-owned parking lot on Nineteenth Avenue. While housing is a need for all and an achievable goal for most, there is a portion of our population that are not currently able to obtain housing. Costs to enter a rental agreement have skyrocketed. Assisting those in need who are currently living outside to resources that exist, exist is a sustainable step. To create a sustainable system where there's housing for everyone is a, is a great goal. But providing a safe and clean location for campers demonstrates the community, community's commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion of the most vulnerable. Homeless individuals are a very vulnerable sector of our population. Demographics consist of homeless veterans and people of color, and a significantly higher percentage is, well, I'm just repeating that. Let's talk about, briefly about project management. What do we do? The task would require coordination with the city. The first step would be to develop a memo of understanding with the city of Forest Grove to confirm the placement of a portable restroom, handwashing station, and garbage dumpster on the city parking lot. This would be completed by thirty-one July. The next step would be to order the sanitation equipment to be delivered and placed. That would be completed by August thirty-one. Hope Community Network will support regular visitation to the site, and this is key. We will support regular visitation to the site to verify that the equipment is clean and in good working order and handle issues that arise. HCN board members are trained and have worked with the homeless population for years. HCN will engage with campers if there is a need and help connect campers to resources. Ongoing discussion with the city could lead to changes in the project if needed. HCN board members are business owners, trained professionals, and people with lived homeless experience. Management of this project will be led by the executive board members who have proven track record of managing sanitation facilities at a homeless encampment in the past, and you'll remember those. City coordination is a must and will be effortless, as HCN has a good relation with the city staff, fire, the fire department, the police department, and the code enforcement officer. And that's one thing that I wanted to mention. Um, code enforcement officer gets in touch with us, you know, a lot, and, uh, she needs to be called out, um, but I'll leave it at that. HCN's communication and dedication to the work of providing service for the homeless individuals has been seen in the community as a good example of how a nonprofit can engage with the city. The requested amount for this project would be twenty thousand dollars. A lot. This would cover our estimates of ten thousand for personnel, someone to watch all of this, and people delivering, and people inspecting, and ten thousand materials. That would be a porta potty and the dumpster, and also getting the dumpster emptied, and the handwashing statement. We've added another fifty-two hundred to our spreadsheet for volunteer time spent. Do you have any questions?
There's five seconds left. I had a quick question, though. What about servicing the porta potty?
Servicing the porta potty.
Yeah, like, how often are you gonna service it?
Part of the, of the memo of understanding that we would work with the city and, and hopefully whoever is supplying the porta potty. And there are different suppliers.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, so next we have the Forest Grove High School Theater Department. Do we know which microphone's working? Are they both working right now, or?
Hello?
Okay, yep. We never know. We have technical...
Yeah, you can go ahead and begin. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Juliette Prosser. I am the Drama Director at Forest Grove High School, and I'm delighted to be invited, um, to this meeting and, um, this ask for funding for our theater department. Um, I believe that arts can change lives and can better, uh, students' lives. This project seeks to provide operational support, uh, for the next two seasons of the Forest Grove High School, um, district theater productions. In two thousand and eleven, our drama program was defunded. It continued off donations, um, and from a very dedicated, uh, staff member at the high school with an after-school program, um, and from ticket sales from previous years with no official internal budget. Uh, drama curriculum plans were drawn up by myself in two thousand and twenty-two to revitalize and to integrate, um, in-class program with after-school programs. Our district currently does not have drama programs for upper elementary and middle school students. At the high school, there's a point-five FTE drama teacher. The goals of the FGHS, uh, Drama Department are not only to serve the high school students, but to also be a creative outlet for younger actors, for younger students, and younger technicians, um, doing technical theater, grades five through twelve. We want to give Neil Armstrong Middle School and Tom McCall Upper Elementary School the opportunity to explore drama before they reach the high school age. We want to give them educational fun activities during the summer that are also free. Access to a well-supported theater program would fill a much-needed gap, uh, for structured learning opportunities to ensure that students have retention of knowledge about theater that could potentially help them get into, um, colleges to study theater, would help them with team building, would help them with creative exploration and expression, while also providing a much-needed center for community, um, engagement. Forest Grove High School Theater values developing a program that accurately represents the diverse culture of our community, our diverse, I, our diverse languages, and to renew engagement with the arts as a community pillar. Through the reintroduction of a strong, engaging, and culturally relevant visual arts program, this grant will allow us to not only make education exciting and expressive for students, but will also illustrate to the community new and diverse ways to be entertained and to engage with the arts, the community, and with each other. Opportunities to build leadership skills and to see, um, our students to see themselves as creative minds with agency to impact, to play a key part in the culture and representation within their community. Uh, we want to solidify our theater program as a bilingual artistic voice for our community. This will have... This will have transformative effects on the cultural landscape of our local community and beyond by increasing representation, cultural awareness, grow a vibrant summer program that engages students across the district. Currently, 59% of our students are Latine and 41% are multilingual. Representation matters, and our program centers on inclusivity and cultural competency. Our goal is to diversify our productions by attracting students grades five through 10, but also by attracting guest artists within our community and elsewhere to give great storytelling and excellent production quality. Having bilingual programs in our school allows our students to see themselves in art and express themselves authentically, while also encompassing the worldviews in our local community and expanding cultural awareness and representation in our artistic community. Through our program, Forest Grove will be able to continue to showcase diverse art and center multilingual students' voices. Funds for this will go to licensing productions for eight shows, including musicals, one-acts, full-length dramas and comedies, as well as helping us to pay for the cost of costumes, as well as helping us to pay for the cost of shoes for actors. The last thing that I want to say is Forest Grove High School wants to be a destination for the arts and culture with a rich cultural heritage, as well as a home for young people to feel seen, heard, and for them to reach their full potential. And I can take any of your questions now.
Thank you. Any questions? So I have a question.
Yeah.
The Activities Department, or even the career ad, like Measure 98, the school district doesn't fund the Theater Department at all?
Our department has been funded by ticket sales, and we have had a drama club funding from ASB. Measure 98 has funded, does not fund my position. Measure 98 funded the film and video position this year.
I'm like trying to wrap my head around some things right now. Sorry.
No, it's okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for asking that. I appreciate that question.
Yeah, I had no idea.
The arts is like not the priority anymore.
Does the district fund any of like the athletic activities? Do you know?
As far as I know, yes, but I would have to get...
Yeah, sorry. Sorry, you don't have to.
There's type-ins now for certain directors, coaches.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Do you have a question? No time. Thanks, Julian.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up, we have Friends of Historic Forest Grove. Hello, go ahead.
Hey, good evening. Mary Jo Morelli, manager of the Alvin T. Smith Property and House for the Friends of Historic Forest Grove. I want to begin with reminding you of our mission. Friends of Historic Forest Grove is committed to preserving local historic resources, including stories, artifacts, documents, buildings, and the historic A.T. Smith House, educating our community about our historical past and creating a committee, community for enthusiasts to support our mission. And with some background. In 19, prior to 1991, the house had, it had had four owners in its long life since 1854. An administrative annexation moved it into the city limits of Forest Grove in 1991, and there was a series of industrial property zoning changes and ownership changed several times throughout that process. The house was scheduled for removal to, or demolition ought to be moved for the placement of a garbage transfer station on its site. Funding in violation of the National Register restrictions saved the house. In 2001, a meth lab was found in the basement, and the house was going to be used for a practice burn by the Forest Grove Fire Department. Again, it was spared because of the National Register status. Friends of Historic Forest Grove then got a purchase option and found private lenders to support the purchase. All lenders were paid in a timely manner, and the property is debt, remains debt-free now. Preservation, restoration, and renovation for safety and improvements are ongoing. Additional land was purchased in 2012, and for Friends of Historic Forest Grove got CCNRs changed and made other changes that allowed the city to purchase the additional 3.2 acres from Friends of Historic Forest Grove. Friends retained the 2.82 original acres through, although planned use by the city of that property is undetermined at this time. Friends of Historic Forest Grove does continue to work with the city to assess future use of the adjacent property. And I want you to know that there's been tremendous support over time. It's the reason that I went through that brief history, is that the city of Forest, through CEP grants, Friends of Historic Forest Grove has received to date $31,406. It received Historic Landmarks Board grants for $4,527. Other grants, federal, private foundations, state grants, Oregon Cultural Trust grants have totaled $158,000. That total is $193,330, $933. This is in your handout. From between 2009 and 2017, Friends of Historic Forest Grove raised through fundraisers and donations almost $22,000. And between 2017 and 2024, we have raised another $35,000 towards the work to be done. This is a long-term, ongoing project, a very important National Register structure. And it's not just an old house to be saved. The location and setting of this house remains significant in interpreting the past and the future. That goes back to the indigenous inhabitants, the missionary period, the settlement period, transportation improvements, and industry. They are all part of the story that lead back to the Friends of Historic Forest Grove's mission and to the livelihood and ongoing preservation of the history that Friends of Historic Forest Grove has through this house. I've included a series of pictures of the improvements over the last several years, and we've made some tremendous strides. We still go back to the split vertical B, mortise-and-tendon joint that was found when we were doing the south side addition, which was partially funded by a CEP. We have since then raised a roof, broadened, straightened the north and south walls of the two-story story section, redone the basement footings, and leveled the first floor. So we are now ready to continue. We now have permission from the State Historic Preservation Office to put gutters and downspouts on the house that although not historically present, they have determined with other assessments that have been done, and they have agreed that we should move forward with that. And the next steps that are all detailed in our application to make progress on the structure. Are there any questions?
Sorry, we don't have time for questions. We're on a hard six-minute time limit, but thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the Forest Grove Recovery Club.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for doing this. It's another example of how creative a community Forest Grove is. I operate a for-profit business in town, and it's supported me and my family for a number of years now. But today, my name is David Wentworth, and I am on the board for the Forest Grove Recovery Club. And we are here to try to get some grant money to make some needed improvements. The Forest Grove Recovery Club has been a part of this community since early, late 1980s. So over 35 years, it's been serving a much-needed demographic, which covers every socioeconomic line, every gender, every race, every faith. You know, drug addiction and alcoholism, there is no discrimination. It affects everyone, and everybody probably has a family member or a person in their life that is affected by this disease. And we offer a safe space for 12-step meetings and other recovery-centric programs to have weekly meetings for people to come in and be able to interject and fellowship with other people who have found a better way to live and who have, you know, shown in the way, and so they can continue to try to better their lives. The money we're looking for is to improve the, we had a tree come down and take out our fence, and we have never had the money together to do that, to fix the fence, as well as the outside meeting area was blown away during that same windstorm. We run on a very, very tight budget. Most, everything is all voluntary. We have one big fundraiser every year, and that's a TNT fireworks stand in Safeway Parking Lot. But the rest of it is just meeting rent and things that we try to get done just to pay the basic expenses of running the club. Also in there is to do some painting and refinishing on the inside main meeting room. We're trying to make the place more attractive, both inside and out. And then also in that grant is to upgrade the kitchen. We do serve meals. Every Sunday morning, we serve breakfast for those people that are in treatment and in restitution center. They are able to come out, have breakfast. They even attend a meeting, and at that time, they can hopefully hear something that makes them want to come back after they get out of treatment and when they don't, aren't required to show up. So that's been very helpful for us. We've seen a lot of growth in that area, specifically on that Sunday, just in the last six months or so, it's probably increased 200 to 300%. And, you know, along with the upgraded appliances would be some energy conservation and less waste, so we can cut down our operating expenses at the same time. So, you know, we strive to just be there for anybody that needs a place to go during the holidays, Christmas, New Year's, Thanksgiving, et cetera. We stay open 24 hours. We provide food because the holidays are really a tough time for a lot of people who are especially new in recovery, and they need a place to go that's not their family's house or anywhere where they can get judged. And so that creates a nice support network. And, you know, as I said, we cover a wide net. There's, you know, we don't target any demographic. We were able to sustain and remain open. We survived through COVID. We lost a lot of meetings closed, so we lost a lot of rent money during that time. But we hope that we can get this grant money so that we can make the improvements that we really can't afford to make based on our budget and to make the place more attractive, increase the property value, and as I said, make it a safe and attractive place for people to come that want to try and get a better way of life. So thank you for letting me share.
My name's Marcy. I've been involved with Forest Grove Recovery Club. And when we say rent of the room, so we charge groups $10 a day or $5 if they cannot afford that. We let them still meet. During COVID, like David was saying, we did boost income and stuff, but when we were able to open the doors back up while the group struggling, so through the fireworks stand and the fundraising that we did do that, we let all groups meet. We know people who, and that'll help. We just started this meeting there, so we're trying to reach out.
Go ahead, Councilor Gonzalez.
Great, thanks. Yeah, one area in your application that I would love for you to build on that I didn't quite see, any collaboration or partnerships with different organizations, people in the community that you might be able to highlight for us?
So the collaboration that we did, we don't do any funding kind of collaborations, but I do collaborate with Washington County Information and Parole. And so anybody that needs to do community service, they can come over and do community service in Safe Space. I do collaborate with the HHS for some case managers when parents are wanting to visit. Like, we put on a Christmas event. We bring Santa Claus to that, so we can keep providing with... Those are the kind of stuff. But there are some anonymity things, you know. But yes, we do collaborate in Safe Space.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much. Thank you. Okay, our last presentation's from the Forest Grove Senior Center on a mini park application.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Hello. And thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present. I'm Sophia Stamatis. I'm the executive director of the center. And in having a conversation with one of our board members, we looked at our grounds and discovered we have an interesting potential, and I would like to discuss that. And before I continue with the, my comments, there was a portion in the grant that we also talked about improving the front of the building and this area where ride connection and the buses are served. We decided that was not appropriate for this particular grant because it involved too much change. But moving forward, I don't know if people are familiar with pocket parks. They are mini parks that are urban-oriented, suburban-oriented, big-city oriented. And we are fortunate at the center to have a piece of property that has good potential for a number of reasons. Not only as a mini park that would start with day access for people, but would also give the center an opportunity for some rent revenue. The ground presently is very simple, grass, a tree. Not very level grass, but a good foundation to go forward. And in reviewing and writing the presentation for you, I was really excited about the impact that it would provide, not just of course for the center, but walking distance to the university, students, neighborhoods, and neighbors that may not want to walk all the way to Roger Park. There is a potential for seating area, a picnic spot, adding some electrical outlets so that we can add some decent lighting. Restrooms are already there at the door into the center. So for Monday through Friday use, there is access to restrooms and to the services within the center. The goal is to grow the volunteer base that would allow this mini park or pocket park to have weekend access, and that is the goal long-term. What I'd like to also talk about is the increase that we would see in hopefully the neighborhood property values. It is an interesting comment that I found online that reflected how property homes in the area actually do increase in value with a mini park in the area. It's a social gathering place for everyone, and it would immediately impact even the Elm's Retirement Home next to us with 100-plus residents already there that really don't have access comfortably to Roger's Park. And it truly is a piece of property that is underutilized. It gets mowed, it gets maintained, and that's where it stops. And it's always a shame... And it's always a shame when you have an asset like that and you really can't put it to use without some special funding. So, and along with this, I'm going to give you an example of what happens in the city of Lake Oswego. I think it's every four years. Local artists come to the table with art that goes in this place through the sidewalk downtown Lake Oswego. And so art is involved, parks and rec is involved. You've got valley art potentially to add art to the, to the mini park. There is short-term benefits, open access, a green space, and then long-term benefits for the Center and the community at large. And in the presentation that I submitted electronically, there are just, there's one picture that shows the existing property and then some examples of what a mini park can look like with both hard surfaces and soft surfaces. So there is accessibility for, for all. And I think at this point, I would like to just open it up to questions because there's a lot that can be talked about, about a mini park. It has its issues and it has its positive aspects. So I'd like to address any questions.
Any questions? I'm going to start with one. So sometimes when you go to a neighborhood, it says for residents only. So would this pocket park be for the whole community and they could come into the Senior Center? Wouldn't it just be for the Elms and?
No, the whole community. And I see it beginning as day use. But I, because right now, we need the staff to be able to support it on weekends.
Who maintains that grass area right now?
The grass area is mowed by Greensum.
Is it part of the city?
It's part of the city property.
It's part of city parks.
We pay, we pay for it to be maintained.
Oh, so you, the Senior Center?
Yeah, we do.
Okay. And that would continue to be part of the budget?
That would continue to be part of it, yes. It would benefit everyone.
Any other questions?
The Senior Center is owned by the city?
The building, no.
So that's like, I just didn't know the area that we're?
It was donated to the city, but it's run by the Senior Center. Well, go ahead, Paul.
City owns the property and the building. We, we let the Senior Center use it on an operating lease that we don't charge them for on an annual basis. They maintain the outside with respect to the grounds and the maintenance.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, so do you think for this round of it, we should do discussion first and then kind of do a tally of our top two? Paul, is it, we're going to award two.
We get two grants.
Your consensus was to award two.
Two, okay. So is that, does that sound okay with everyone that we?
You want to just do two?
Aren't we doing two, we only?
Doing two, but I mean, just so we get more, I mean.
Well, if we do two, the top two, then we'll have more, probably. Do you guys want to discuss? Let's, is that fine if we discuss first? Sure. Okay. Counsel Guffston?
I had a question first. Well, I actually had a couple of questions, but with the grants, we had the one-year CEP, two one-year $10,000, two one-year $5,000. So what are we doing here?
So we didn't have any applications for the $5,000 or the $10,000. So at the beginning of the meeting, we had consensus to add a $20,000. So now we can do two $20,000 grants.
We can't do two $20,000 and one $10,000?
You don't have any $10,000.
Because no one applied for a $10,000.
But we can't just throw that into the?
No. We need, no, right?
Well, we got two, 20, 30, 40, 50. Oh, you see what I'm saying? The math.
The committee's consensus was to apply to award grants at the amount that they were applied for, not to necessarily award less, not to give somebody less than they asked for.
That's fine.
That $10,000 will go to next year's.
That's fine. I know we've made, like last year, we changed with the CIG grant, you know, that sort of thing. So wanted to check. And just to verify, when we were talking about the Senior Center, essentially if that was funded, we would be funding ourselves? Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Any improvements made at the Senior Center become the property of the city.
So is that a conflict?
No.
Okay, I'm going to go with Counsel Ewing and then Counsel President Rippey.
You're on mute.
Counsel Ewing, yeah.
Sorry, sorry. So I have a question regarding the Porta Potty and the garbage and the Hope Grant. And I'd like to ask this of staff because they're talking about an MOU. And I would like to know what staff's thinking is on an MOU because I have concerns of the upkeep of the Porta Potty. I also have concerns on whether the, not the garbage receptacle is going to be open all the time because that can cause a lot of problems where people just randomly drop off. So I'd like to hear from staff on what they would expect to provide in an MOU to protect the community with some assuredly in these extras that they want to add to the time, place and management property.
If you recall, when the city was doing the time, place and manner ordinance, when it did it last year, part of the discussion was, where are we going to offer sanitation services there? The discussion at that time was, we were going to wait to see what the usage on that lot was to see if the sanitation services were necessary. In the months since the time and place, manner, time, place, manner ordinance has been passed, we haven't really seen enough activity to justify the sanitation services are based on the people that used it for overnight camping from the 7:00 PM to the 7:00 AM time period. We've seen very few campers overnight on that lot. The other discussion we had back, back when the time, place and manner ordinance was passed was if we were going to look at sanitation services, we would talk to the county about funding those because that's something we, at that time, we've, the staff and the council felt that the county should fund because it was a direct service for homeless. And that's, so that's, we haven't really talked much about an MOU because this is, these are the staff points on the, with respect to the application.
Thank you, Counsel Ewing. Counsel President Rippey?
Can I just get a clarification of the different organizations that are applying for CEP? Because we had some carryovers from the CIG.
Yeah, it is the Essential Services, so the Family Justice Center. The Chamber was awarded, so they're out. So then it's the Elks Weekend Backpack Program, the WashCo Bikes, Hope Community Network for the Sanitation Services, the Forest Grove Theater Revitalization, the AT Smith Phase Four Structural Restoration, Forest Grove Recovery Revitalization, and the Senior Center Mini Park and Grounds Enhancement.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I think my comments, again, it's like really just a tough decision. And I've found that year after year. So the community enhancement program is supposed to help organizations, right? Like enhance the community in different ways. And I feel, you know, for the last, I think since I've been on council, there's always for me this balance of like wanting to do that, wanting to enhance something new and get people involved or make it better. But then also the realization that sometimes it's not enhancement. It's just like giving people basic needs, a place to go, food to eat. And I don't really ever know how to like balance that out in my brain. So I just find that it hurts my heart to like not be able to do all of it. So I guess a couple of things I would like to say is that I think the Family Justice Center sticks out to me a little bit because they have served our community members for a number of years. And we don't have, and you know, like with the Center for Treatment and Triage and Treatment for the county, we had opioid dollars fund that. And the city of Forest Grove, to my knowledge, has not ever really helped fund the support services for people who live or have experienced domestic abuse. So, and there's like a direct correlation to our nonprofit Adelante that they're going to work with. The Elks Backpack Program, if you look at their application, it's all materials. It's just all volunteers. It's volunteers and materials. I think that's the case with a number of our organizations. So those two stand out. And then, you know, the Theater Department at Forest Grove High School is just really like just rebuilding itself. And they offered their first ever bilingual play this last year. And I see students who have, who never saw their family members perform. So they didn't know they could perform and to watch them come into their own. And then the mini park, I don't know, the mini park is such, the pocket park is such a good idea. So anyways, those are my discussion points and I'll try to narrow it down to two. Any other discussions? Counselor Guffston?
I just had some thoughts. For me, I mean, the Family Justice Center is, is like personally a very impactful organization. But I think that with the CEP grants, in my opinion, a couple of the others fit more of the program goals. That being the Forest Grove Theater Revitalization. And the, the Forest Grove Recovery Revitalization Project, I have got to say, this group, Forest Grove Recovery Group is absolutely an under. Yes, definitely are very hardworking. They are always looking for ways to raise funds, always, always, always. And they're, they're right there when there is opportunity. They are very underserved and the silent unseen, more so than any of the other groups that I know of. So I really am, I'm encouraged for the Forest Grove Theater Revitalization because the arts are so important, especially nowadays with our, all of our social problems. But that Forest Grove Recovery Group, they, this could really help them. And I would be, and although all of these are, you know, very important, I would go as far as making a motion to add in that other $10,000 and allowing that to be placed on one of these as well.
Is there a second for that motion?
I would second that.
Okay, so there's a motion by Counsel Guffston to add a $10,000 option. And it was seconded by Counsel Marshall, discussion on that. So how would that work? Can staff help us out a little bit? Would you, would we like specifically have to award the $10,000? And then would you ask the applicant?
You would, you would vote to award the $10,000 and then we would say you applied for $20,000. What, what will you do with $10,000? And then we would write the contract to fit $10,000.
Okay, I see Counsel Ewing has her hand raised.
I'm confused.
One minute, Counsel Valenzuela, let's like.
Oh, no, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay.
So I guess my ponte is this. So are we talking about doing three grants? Are we talking about doing two 20 and a third at 10? I'm just not imagining it, I'm sorry.
Right now, the motion on the floor, we, as a committee, we already have consensus to give two $20,000 grants.
Right.
The motion we're discussing right now on the floor is to add an additional $10,000 grant to one of the people who apply for the CEP grant.
Outside of the two 20,000?
Correct.
Okay, right, I got it. I had it.
And where's that 10, where's that 10,000 coming from?
Well, we had allocated, right, two fives, two tens, and no one applied for those. So initially, at the beginning of the meeting, we had added a 20,000, which would leave over $10,000. So that's where that comes from. So if we, if there's discussion, we vote no, then that would carry over till next year. And if not, we'll spend it.
Yeah, originally, we'd set the goal to not partially fund, only fully fund the requests. So essentially, this will, the, the, the motion allows now staff to go and negotiate with whoever we award to see if they accept a partial award and see if folks can fund half their project essentially, which is possible.
Correct. Any other, Counsel Valenzuela, did you have a discussion, question or comment?
No, now it's clear to me. I just was confused about, you know, how many grants we were giving and, you know, with the addition of the 10,000. But I do understand. And I have made my choices already.
Okay. Any other discussion? Let's vote on the motion. Can the city recorder call, roll call? So the motion is to add $10,000. Counsel Guffston?
Yes.
Counsel Martinez?
Yes.
Counsel Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counsel Marshall?
Yes.
Counsel Rippey?
Yes.
Counsel Valenzuela?
Yes.
Counsel Ewing?
Yes.
Committee Member Marissa?
Marissa left.
No, she's still, her hand's raised.
Well, I saw her sign off, but that, I could be in error, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Marissa.
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel? Yes. So the motion to add $10,000 to the CEP fund is approved by the Forest Grove City Council on a vote of three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Is there more than that? Because it?
There'd be nine.
Nine to zero. Because they're on the screen too. Okay, so let's go through.
Oh, yeah.
Let's, let's go, are we ready? Is there more deliberations on the potential projects? Are we ready to? What was that, Marissa?
I think she's off.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, excuse me.
It's okay. So let's, can everyone give me their choices? Let's just go through. If you want to take a minute, you're going to, I need two choices for $20,000 and one choice for 10. Okay, I'm going to, give me like a minute and then I'll come through and ask for your, your choices, okay?
She was, she was the only one who wasn't here besides me. I'm here, did you say my name? I'm sorry.
No, right now, I need, we're just taking a moment to choose the ones we recommend for the two 20,000 grant and the one 10,000. Okay, can I start calling on people? I'm gonna, are you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay. Counsel Guffston?
Yes, Bob. All right. Forest Grove Theater is my number one choice for the 20,000. I guess there isn't a number one and a number two, is there?
Let's do that, yeah, do the 20,000 first and then?
And then the other 20,000, Forest Grove Recovery Revitalization Project. And then the third one for 10,000, the Mini Park and Grounds Enhancement. I would also like, I don't know if this is a good time for this, to see a partnership between them and the city to possibly help.
Hang on a minute, let's wait on that.
Is that too much?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, Counsel Martinez?
I'm going to say number one, the Elks. Number two, the Recovery Club. And number three, WashCo Bikes.
Okay.
Yeah, my number one is the Recovery Club. Very, very touched by the application and with the work that we're doing in the region with homelessness. The work that, the missing pillar is addiction and behavioral health program. So we need to support that, in my opinion, desperately. Number two for 20K is the theater. And the 10K grant would be the Family Justice Center.
So mine are the Elks Backpack Program for 20, the Forest Grove Theater for 20, and the Forest Grove Recovery Revitalization for 10. Okay, Counsel Marshall?
Family Justice 20, Elks 20, and Recovery 10.
Okay, Marissa?
Hope Community 20, Recovery 20.
Um, Hope Community 20, Recovery 20, the, the Family Justice 10.
Thank you. Um, Counsel President Rippey?
This is tough. 20 for the Elks, 20 for the Recovery Club, and 10 for the Mini Park.
Thank you. Counselor Valenzuela?
Yes, thank you. So 20 for the Theater, Forest Grove High School, 20 for Forest Grove Recovery, and 10 for the Mini Park.
Thank you. Counselor Ewing?
Uh, 20 for the Elks, 20 for the Theater, and 10 for the Recovery.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So between, we had, I'm just gonna read it, but what ends up happening is we kind of got a, okay, so here's the deal. We had, I'm just gonna read it out. We had two $10,000 votes for Family Justice and one 20,000. Okay, so that's kind of off the table. The Weekend Backpack Program from the Elks had five votes for 20. Kind of, I'm just gonna do the top ones. And then the Forest Grove Theater also had five votes for 20,000. And the Forest Grove Recovery Revitalization had seven votes for 20 and two votes for 5. So the Mini Parks had a five, had three votes for 10,000, and WashCo Bikes had one. So basically, our top three votes for the 20,000. And then we needed to decide, pick which one of those only gets 10. So Weekend Backpack Program has five counselors or five committee members. The Forest Grove Theater has five committee members. And the Forest Grove Recovery Revitalization Project has seven for 20 and two. So I think, can we consent? Is there consensus that the Recovery Program gets one of the 20,000?
Yes.
They had the most votes. They had nine votes to get funded. Okay, so that's for surely a 20,000. Okay, and then now we need to decide between the Weekend Backpack Program and the Forest Grove Theater Revitalization.
And that's for the 20,000.
Yeah, and, and so basically whichever.
So one's gonna get 20 and one's gonna get 10. Is that correct? Sorry.
That, that's exactly what I was gonna insinuate, Mayor. It's tough, but also.
What are the three again? I'm sorry.
No, there's just two.
There's only two.
We're down to two. One's gonna get 20 and one's gonna get 10. So I guess what I would say, and I hate to do this, but from where you, just, this is just me discussing, you guys definitely change my mind if you want to. But I feel like there's not another option for the, working with the Elks and the Weekend Backpack Program, they don't have like another option to match funding. I think the Forest Grove Theater could go to the Booster Club, the Forest Grove Booster Club. Now, have you done that yet? We, there's, no, the Forest, the city of Forest Grove has a Booster Club for the whole city. I'll get you and, I'll get you in touch with them. But I do feel like there might be an opportunity to get some funding through that. But I, I can't speak for them, but.
I'm on the board. I'm on, I'm on, actually on the Booster Board as well. So you can actually email me directly and I can get you in contact with that information.
But, but so for me, I would, my vote would be to give the Elks the 20 and to give the Forest Grove Theater the 10. But that's just me. Other people should tell their opinion too.
I think I'm going to support the, I'm sorry, I'm going to support the Theater, Forest Grove High School. I think it's essential, just like activities, recreational activities are important for a healthy community. And so I'm going to go ahead and support the Forest Grove High School this time.
Okay, so Counselor Valenzuela would like to see the, the Forest Grove High School Theater get 20,000 and the Elks Backpack get 10. Okay, let's go through and just do it really, and then Counsel, Counsel President Rippey?
Yes, um, and I've seen the, the Elks have come to us quite a number of years, trying to get this program off the ground and trying to.
We lost your audio, Counsel Rippey.
The 20,000 and the, the Theater Department, the 10. Uh, thank you.
I go, can you repeat that again? We lost your audio here. Which one did you want to give 22 and which one did you want to give 10 to?
20 to the Elks and 10 to the Theater.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Ewing?
Yes, I believe that we should do 20 to the Elks and 10 to the Theater. I think that there are other opportunities for the Theater, although I truly believe that we need to be looking for other options other than just sports for our young people. But I believe that it's important to me that Elks has come before us multiple times and they always manage to take care of our children when the weekends and holidays, when they normally wouldn't have their school lunches. So yes, I move the Elks to 20 and the Theater to 10.
Thank you, Counselor Ewing. Marissa?
Um, I don't have any questions right now.
Do you have a preference on, so we're talking between the Elks Backpack Program and the Forest Grove Theater, which one would you like to see get awarded 20,000? And which one would you like to get 10,000?
Um, the Backpack would, would be my choice for the 20 and 10,000 for the Theater. I agree with, um, you, um, with what? Excuse me, Marissa, it's. You, yes. I'm sorry, yeah, I, I agree with what she just said. I, I do believe that the Theater, um, it's growing and I appreciate that they did the first bilingual, program this year. I went to it. It was, it was beautiful to see that. Um, but I do believe that the Backpack, um, it, it has an effect on, on the children of this community. And I feel like that targets a, a more need, a more need at this moment. And then hopefully, with time, we can find other programs and other ways to fund the, the Theater. As you guys were mentioning, the Booster Club and other things like that. We just need a lot more money to fund everything.
Great, thank you. Counselor Gusserson? Come on, you had like five people in front of you.
Um, this is so difficult. Um, this one, this one's somehow more difficult. I don't know why. the Theater is so very important to the spirit within, right? And I understand that we need to eat food and we need backpacks. I, I get that. But there's something that we miss when we ignore the arts, in my opinion. Um, and so, as, as difficult as it is, I, I would lean towards 20,000 for the Theater and 10,000 for the Elks.
Thank you. Counselor Martinez?
The Elks for the 20.
Counselor Gonzalez?
I feel like the, uh, the votes have been counted at this point. So I'm, I'm throwing my opinions to the wind for whoever will hear them. At this point, I'm just keeping people from, uh, from going home and from you from starting your council meeting. So thanks for allowing me to go on. But, um, yeah, I, I would have, I would have put the 20 into the Theater and the 10 into the Elks. But I respect the leadership of the council that lives in this community, that knows the organizations doing the good work. And I'm happy to support, um, what, what, what feels like the consensus.
I see, um, I see the value in both. I, I personally think that I, I would feel more comfortable giving 20,000 to the Elks and 10,000 to Forest Grove, just because I think there's different avenues for fundraising for that. And I think I can help facilitate that if needed, so, and kind of point in the right direction. So that, that would be my, my suggestion for that.
Okay, so the tally, if I didn't do it incorrectly, is that six committee members would like to see the Elks get the $20,000 grant and the Forest Grove Theater Department be awarded the 10,000. Um, I would entertain a motion. Okay, it's moved by Counsel, Counsel Marshall to approve that. And seconded by Counselor Martinez, may we please have a roll call vote? Did I forget something? Jeez.
You had the Recovery. Can you also officially award the money to the Recovery Club as well?
Oh, yeah, so the Recovery, sorry, let's redo the motion. Can you redo, thank you, sorry, David. Okay, so you want, the motion needs to, the motion is.
I'm motion to approve the 20,000 for the Recovery, 20,000 for the Elks, and 10,000 for Forest Grove. I'm gonna.
Second.
Perfect. Counselor Marshall has moved that the $20,000 grants be awarded to the Forest Grove Recovery Revitalization Project, the Weekend Backpack Program for Forest Grove School District underserved students, and 10,000 to be awarded to the Forest Grove Theater Revitalization Project. Um, it was seconded by Counselor Martinez. And can we have roll call vote?
Counselor Gusserson?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Rippey?
Yes.
Counselor Valenzuela?
Yes.
Counselor Ewing?
Yes.
Committee Member Marissa?
Aye.
Mayor Wenzel?
Aye. In a vote of nine to zero, the CEP grants have been awarded. Thank you, and this meeting is adjourned. I'm gonna call to order this work session of the Forest Grove City Council at 8:15. The topic is to discuss the Charter Review. Uh, we have our city attorney, Ashley Driscoll, gonna lead the conversation. Members of the City Council, members of the Charter Review Committee are in the audience, and then community members are also in the audience, as well as various staff members. Okay, Ms. Driscoll, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
All right, uh, good evening, Counsel, Ashley Driscoll, City Attorney's Office. As mentioned, I'm gonna do a brief review on where we're at with the Charter Review process. And at the end of the presentation tonight, the council will get a first opportunity to review the resolution with the potential ballot title. So next slide, please. So the purpose of this meeting is to recap, to review the draft charter language and to review the draft ballot language. So to review, um, the work sessions with City Council, which came after nearly nine months of meeting with the Charter Review Committee. The City Council met in a work session on April 22nd to review all the recommendations from the, the Charter Review Committee. The City Council then met again in work session on May 13th to deliberate on the recommendations. The next step in this process is we have targeted the November 2024 ballot to submit to voters potential amendments to the Charter. As discussed at the last work session, at this point, the City Council is leaning towards one ballot measure which encompasses all the potential amendments to the Charter. Uh, go back one slide, sorry. To go over the specific amendments to the Charter that were discussed, the Charter Committee looked at geographical representation and did not recommend any changes. The council could, um, agreed with that recommendation. Likewise, with term limits, it was, um, discussed at the committee level and discussed at the City Council level with no recommended changes. Uh, next slide, please. The role of the mayor was discussed both at the Charter Review Commission level or committee level, and then again at the City Council level. And the City Council is proposing to amend the city charter language from the mayor serving as the political head to the primary representative of council. The, oh, I'm sorry, back one. The role of the council president is also recommended for an amendment, and I have an additional amendment to discuss this evening. Um, the Charter Review Commission recommended that the council president serve no more than two consecutive one-year terms as president. However, there was some discussion regarding how clear the original proposed language was. So I have revised it once again to make it clear that somebody serving in the role of the council president can serve for two years, then take a year off where they're not serving as council president, but then be eligible to, to serve again after a one-year hiatus or break in service. I believe that aligns with both what the Charter Review Committee was recommending and what we discussed at the council level. And looking at that language one more time, my recommendation is to be very explicit and clear that it is a one-year break in service after a city, I'm sorry, after a council president has served two one-year terms. Um, the city manager residency requirement, um, both the Charter Review Committee and the council are recommending a change to the Charter to not require the city manager to reside in the city. And then both the committee and the council is making recommendations, procedural recommendations to streamline processes regarding approving ordinances, resolutions, and orders, and to slightly change the term of when a counselor takes office from, um, the first council meeting after the election results are certified to the first council meeting of the year after the election. Next slide, please. The committee and the council are also recommending that there's a few changes to how the City Council fills vacancies. One, to allow the remaining counselors to fill any vacant council positions, notwithstanding any form or voting requirements of this Charter. Essentially, that's addressing the problem that they had out in Baker City where the number of seated counselors fell below their form requirement. This ensures that the authority stays with the remaining members of council. Also, some changes to the length of an appointed counselor's term. So instead of potentially filling a four-year term as an appointed counselor, an appointee's term would run to the next general election, so a maximum of two years. And then the council must adopt by ordinance a process for appointing members to vacant positions. That's already in place. That just puts that requirement into the Charter. The reason for vacancies, both the committee and the councils recommending, I'm aligning with the League of Oregon Cities in model Charter and having conviction of a misdemeanor or felony crime be one of the reasons why a council position can be vacated. Next slide, please. Okay, so those are all of the, um, recommendations for amendments. The new item for the council to review this evening is a draft charter, a draft resolution that would be, um, that would submit the item to voters. As we've discussed, the Charter has to be, any Charter amendments have to be approved by voters. So the resolution that you have in your packet today, um, actually refers the matter to the voters when passed by the City Council. It also includes the language that wouldn't be included in the voter pamphlet, which includes the caption, the question, the summary, and then the explanatory statement. There are legal requirements regarding all four of these pieces. Um, the caption, question, and summary all have pretty stringent length requirements. Um, I believe it's 10 words, 20 words, and 175 words respectively. And then the explanatory statement can be 500 words. In essence, these need to be simple, impartial, and fair in outlining what the voter, what the city is asking the voters to consider. So we are tentatively scheduling the resolution to come before the City Council at your July 8th, uh, meeting. The objective for tonight is to ensure that we're still aligned on all the substantive amendments and to allow the council to comment on the resolution, ballot title, and explanatory statement. So with that, I can either take questions or, um, turn it over to the council for deliberations.
Are there questions before we?
So I have a, I want to discuss the, the, the only thing that, that there was consensus for changing from what the Charter Review Committee mentioned was the role of the mayor. And I went back and looked at minutes and I recapped the discussion we had at the last meeting. And I believe both the Charter Review Committee and the council had some counselors and some members of the, of the Charter Review Committee, you know, were concerned that political head, like how people view political head now or political as a partisan system. When I think that the intent originally was the political head is the elected representative. It's, we have a representative democracy in this country where the voters.
It's, we have a representative democracy in this country where the voters vote on who they want elected. And so I'm not going to lie, there's a little bit of angst in me to go away from the LOC, go away from other charters, to go away from the Charter Review Committee. But I, I think I would feel better, because there's two, two things that were changed, that I think needed to be added to our definition. And I think the definition was a good first attempt, but when this charter is our constitution that only gets reviewed, like, once a decade. So I think I would like to see it say something like, "The primary elected representative of the council and the city." Because we moved, the recommendation moved away from using the term "city" to using "council", and the mayor, you will vote for a mayor to represent the city. So I understand the reason and the rationale and the discussion, because I thought there was similar discussion between the Charter Review Committee and the council. But when you say, when we just leave it for "primary representative of the council", I think that it's just a little, it, it, I don't know if we really get the role and what, you know, the point of being an elected representative is that the voters can repeal, they can remove you from office, you're held to ethics standards, and you are accountable to your voters, to the people who elected you in your community. So I'm hoping I can get consensus from the council to amend that to "primary elected representative of the council and the city."
What does it say for the role of council?
Ashley, do you have that?
I'm just wondering, does it have that elected official part in that, or is it just? You don't mean like you're-
The council consists of mayor and six counselors nominated and elected, and elected from the city at large. So it has that in the council definition.
I wouldn't see why it would, that you wouldn't have that as part of your title. I, I get what you're saying. I mean, I think if it's with the council and it's in line with what the council is, it would be, is in line with what the mayor's, what the mayor's position would be as well.
Is there, Counselor Ewing?
So, I, I understand what you're saying. I think it is in the terms, but it isn't specific about elected. I, again, get back to when we're talking about the representative of the city. I get back to this. We are a city governed by a whole body. And for us to say that you, that that role is specific for the council and the city, again, takes away that whole discussion that we had that it is not the role of the mayor to make those types of decisions. It is the role of the council as a whole. So I am not willing to kind of go with that change, elected. I don't know. I, I don't have any problem with it. I don't think that it's necessarily necessary to put it in there. But I do not want us getting away from the conversations that we had that the representation comes, is through the mayor from the council as a whole body. Thank you.
I, we are a council-led government. We have numerous things that state that. But I also think that if you look at it from the community, the community looks to the mayor as someone representing them, like, not just the, the primary representative of six other, of seven of us on council, right? So it's the mayor, you know, I'm just, it's the mayor that represents the city at the Memorial Day celebration. Thank you to the American Legion for sponsoring that yesterday. It's, there, I mean, the thing is, is that I under, you know, we have rules that limit a mayor abusing power and speaking not aligning with council. And that mayor, if that happens, should be held accountable. But the charter is for the whole city. And so I, I would just hate, this is a really big thing. This is our constitution. And I would hate for a, a definition to be changed. And the city, the community members of the city to be left out of their own charter because people are concerned that an individual is going to abuse that power. And I would hope that if the, a mayor ever did that, that they, you know, the council would censor them, they would go to the Ethics Commission, the voters would repeal that person. But to me, it, I mean, it said the political head of the city. It can be changed to the primary elected representative of the council and the city. But I feel like community members want, like, they elected somebody to represent them, right? And that's part of the, the deal. I mean, I don't know. I just feel that that's the whole point of running for a political office in a nonpartisan local government, is that you represent your city. You solve problems for your city. Point of order, you're interrupting me.
Other members. I'd like to hear from other members.
Point of order, thank you. So I'm just saying that that's what I think. That's why I, I'm not going against the whole thing. I understand changing it to "primary representative", so it's not political, but the city has, the city representative has to be included. Counselor President Rippey?
I think that I originally said, when I made this recommendation at our last meeting, that the mayor was to serve as the primary representative of the council, the council for the city of Forest Grove. So after the word "council" was, was, were the words for the city of Forest Grove, which then incorporates what, exactly what I think you're trying to say. But again, I'll go back to the earlier section. I don't know whether it's section three or four, but it talks about the council is the head of the government. All the power, all the authority, everything resides within the council. And that, that's the defining part with regard to a charter. And I understand that the public perception may be that the mayor is separate, but the charter clearly states that it, that it, that everything resides with, within the council. And I think that that should be the emphasis of, of the description of the roles of the mayor as well. That it, it is a, it is a council form of government, and the council retains all the power and authority unless it implicitly gives that to, to someone else.
I think you're saying, section six, where it says, "The council exercises legislative authority by ordinance, administrative authority by resolution, and quasi-judicial authority by order. The council may not delegate its authority to adopt ordinances." So it, like, specifically says what the council, the powers of the council are.
Yeah.
Those are those authorities. Okay, Counselor Valenzuela?
Yes, you know, it, it has been really stressful for me to watch this conversation. And I want to ask, because I came to council a few years ago, did we ever have this conversation with the former mayors? Was there a desire to change it? Because political head, you know, if people understand something differently nowadays, you know, I'm, I'm really sorry, but political head is something that we all understand, you know, what, what it means, and I don't, I did not see a need to make that change. But okay, you know, there was a consensus to go ahead and make that change. And I'm going to support Melinda on this, to add that. But after this conversation that you were all having, I'm wondering then why do we have a mayor? You know, what, why do people elect a mayor? For what? To be who? To do what for them?
What I don't understand-
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Rippey.
What I don't understand is why the mayors are not supporting the council form of government.
I, I think I, so that's a question for me, because I thought you said the mayor doesn't support it. I do support it. I, I don't see any situation in where I haven't brought something back to council, where I've spoken out of turn and not with what the council says, where I haven't encouraged collaboration. What I'm saying is that people elect people for positions, and anyone can run for this position. But there's definitely more expectations, there's more stress, there's more events, there's things that the mayor has to do. And I'm sorry, but whether the council sees that or not, that's how the community sees it. The community sees that the mayor is, like, the person that they're like, well, why is the mayor do, I, I mean, so I just want to make sure, and that's the power of the vote. The power of the vote is if the community doesn't like what the mayor's doing or a counselor's doing. And that's why I heard some of you all say, like, hey, we're not going to support term limits. We believe in the voters. And, but then in the next, you know, conversation, it's like, oh, well, hey, you know, we don't believe in what the Charter Review Committee said about the mayor after listening to public comment. We think we know better. But I don't, like, that had nothing to do with community engagement or anything like that. So, Counselor Gethison?
So, I actually Googled the word "represent", but I, but before I even did that, I, I agree with Counselor Ewing. It's, the primary representative of the council is the mayor. And when I try to think of myself as a resident, a community member, I feel the same way. I don't feel like the member or the mayor does not speak for me as a resident. It speaks for the council. They represent the council when they are speaking, and how the council works, and how the council feels, and what the council decides. Now, that might trickle down at times when there's voters that go to the council, right? And, and tell us that they want things a certain way. But in, in no way do I think that we should change this to "primary representative of the city". I just don't.
We're actually changing it from "political head of the city" to "primary representative of the council". And it's not the same as the, the LOC charter. It's not, I'm just saying, like, the actual change is to move from the political head of the city. And so, like, I was trying to find the compromise of saying, okay, if we want to get rid of, get away from political head, that's fine. But there are times when there's, like, capital projects or regional things where it's not, the mayor isn't going as a representative of council based on a legislative resolution or a policy. They're going as a partner or to show support as the mayor of that city. Right? Like, of the city, of the city government.
Without the council, there's no mayor, and without the mayor, there's no council. We are one body, and that's how it should be written.
So how do you delineate, so you, I guess, I don't. Counselor Ewing?
I think that I was happy, very happy with what we first said. And Tim, if you'll repeat it for me again, it is the representative with, for the council and the city of Forest Grove. Isn't that how you, wasn't that what was initially put in as the change for this?
I believe I said the mayor serves as the primary representative of the council for the city of Forest Grove.
That, to me, is pretty clear. It says that you are representing the council for the city of Forest Grove. And that, I think, is what I'm looking for. And to answer Mariana's question, yes, this was brought up with two other mayors. And it was discussed, but the two other mayors really resisted ever bringing forward to charter. For 14 years, it never made it to a charter review. Because that title, for most, has a meaning above and beyond what that elected position is. So, to me, I felt the easiest resolution, the clearest resolution, and still to keep the city of Forest Grove in that conversation was the way that it was proposed by Counselor Rippey and was put into our Charter Review request.
Counselor Marshall?
Do we have to make a motion to add the additional verbiage that Counselor Rippey, President Rippey had mentioned?
Well, he didn't do it the first meeting. Well, it's not in any of, Ashley, can you answer that question?
Was it in the first one? Because I believe that's how he had worded it.
I didn't see it in-
I should just go, I don't recall that. I'd have to-
That's why I brought it up, because I didn't see it in the-
I would have to go back and review the tape. I'm not sure if Jesse Vanden has anything to say about that.
Since this is a work session, is there consensus to say the council for the city of Forest Grove? Is there consensus on that?
Yes.
I heard Counselor Rippey, I heard Counselor Ewing.
Yes.
Okay. And you all think we can leave out "elected" for the primary? You guys don't think we need "elected" in there, even though for section seven, the council, it says "elected" from the city at large? If we're saying that the council and the mayor are the same. Like, my point is that we are a weak mayor system. We have a city manager. The city manager is the administrative representative for the city of Forest Grove. I want people to know that they elect the mayor, and they can choose not to elect a mayor, and they can choose to recall a mayor, but the mayor is elected. So-
Well, so is every other member of council elected.
I know, and it states that in section seven. I'm sorry to interrupt. It states that in section seven. So I'm just saying, if, in that section of the mayor, can we add "elected"?
It says already down there that there, mayor and six counselors nominated and elected from the city at large.
It says "for the council". So basically, what she's proposing is that section seven would kind of morph into the mayor's roles in section eight to include the elected for the city at large, not necessarily elected as the city at large, but be similar to the verbiage in section seven.
Yeah, I'm just proposing that, instead of politi, so we change it. Yes.
What's the purpose of adding the word "elected"?
So people know that it was their choice, like, that they put someone in that position, because Jesse is a primary representative of the city as well. But the council hires him.
But we already say that we're elected in section seven. I don't, I don't understand.
Okay.
I don't understand why.
Okay. Ashley, thanks.
Done.
For consistency's sake with the rest of the charter, can we use the, just the word "city"? Because the rest of the charter, we just say "city" when referring to the city of Forest Grove. I would like-
Sure. Yeah.
Thanks. Okay, so is there not consensus to add the word "elected"? I'm not really seeing any.
I would support that, Melinda.
Thank you, Counselor Valenzuela. So I have two people that would like to add the word "elected".
It's already in section seven.
For the council, okay. And I just thought for consistency, but, okay, so I have two people-
I'm sorry, I do have a question. So you want to, you're suggesting to add that word referring to the mayor?
Yes.
Right? Okay, so, because in the other section, I believe, it's referring to the council? Okay. Well, it is not the same. It just isn't.
It, it is the same. I'm sorry.
Counselor President Rippey?
Yeah, it, it is the same, because section seven specifically says, "The council consists of a mayor and counselors." That's inclusive. There, the council consists of those members, and they're all elected.
Okay, so what is, okay, yeah, that's very clear. But what is the problem? Why is there a barrier here to add this word like Melinda is suggesting?
Because it would also, could also be construed that it's the council that's electing the mayor, and that's not correct.
But it would just matter how you word it. I mean, how it's worded, right?
Counselor Gethsen?
I, I don't understand why this is such a big deal. It's there. "Council consists of a mayor and six counselors nominated and elected from the city at large." I don't understand why, why we have to put it anywhere else. I mean, we can put extra words everywhere and have this twice as long. So I, I don't, I don't understand why we need to add it.
Okay, so I'm not hearing consensus. We're going to move on. Okay. So I'm not hearing consensus. We're going to move on.
I just don't understand the resistance to it.
Yeah.
That doesn't make sense to me.
Thanks councillor Valenzuela. Ashley, go ahead.
The mayor serves as the primary representative of the council for the city. Yep.
Great. Thanks. Okay. Other discussion points for this resolution, timeline, questions, looking over the draft resolution? Councillor Ewing?
Yes, I have a question as far as process. Are we then going to also have, I want to make sure that I have this clear in my mind. Are we also planning to have a work session after this has passed or not passed, on how we are going to reach out to the community, engage the community, whether or not boards and commissions can be part of that engagement? Are we going to have more process oriented workshop on how this is going to be launched within the community?
Jesse?
We could have a work session on that. Right now, if the city council passes a resolution referring this to the voters, we do already have a webpage. We were going to update the website. And we were going to make sure that it was included in some of our social media posts. It has to be advisory in nature. It can't be advocacy in nature from staff's standpoint. With regard to including the boards and commissions, we could do that if the council would like. But the typical process that these, these types of charter amendments have followed have been, of course, there's going to be a statement that would be in the Washington County's voter pamphlet. There would be something on the website. There would be social media, the kind of the standard outreach that the city normally does for these types of things we would follow. If there's something more that the council would like us to do, we'd certainly be happy to do it. And if the council would like, we could have a work session on it as well.
I guess that what I'm feeling is that having been through many big things like this, the more that we inform our community, the more that we engage our community, the better you will have in your results. Also, there are very specific, as you know and staff knows, very specific rules and laws against advocacy versus informational. And I want to make sure that if that is the case, that my boards and commissions are very aware of what they can and cannot do. I think staff is pretty much aware because they've been through this on multiple times before. So yes, I would like a work session where we sit down as a council and decide not just how it's going to be sent out, but what are the rules and procedures are necessary to be followed so that we don't get into any legal turmoil? Thank you.
Thanks councillor Ewing. Any other questions, concerns? Okay, I'm going to adjourn this work session and we're going to move to the conference room for executive session. Zoom attendees, please switch links. Thank you. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Forest Grove City Council. We are a little bit late. The meeting start time is at 7:50. Will our city recorder please call roll?
Councillor Gustafson?
Here.
Councillor Martinez?
Here.
Councillor Marshall?
Here.
Councillor Rippey?
Here.
Councillor Ewing?
Here.
Councillor Valenzuela?
Here.
Mayor Wenzel?
Here. Forest Grove City Council meetings are located on the land of the Tualatin Kalapuas who call themselves the Apalati. They are now part of the Confederate tribes of Grand Rock. Will the council and the audience please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice of God.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to item B, public comment. Time provided for anyone wishing to speak to the city council on an item not on the agenda or on the agenda but not scheduled for a public hearing. Comments are limited to two minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. The public comment period shall not exceed 30 minutes unless a majority of councillors present vote to extend the time. Zoom attendees may use the raise hand option to be called on. Are there any members of the community signed up to give public comment? Okay, seen none. Anyone online? There's no attendees. So we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will all be adopted with a single motion without separate discussion. Councillors who wish to remove an item from the consent agenda may do so prior to the motion. Any items removed will be discussed and acted upon following the approval of the remaining items. What is the wish of the council?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
The consent agenda was moved by councillor Martinez and seconded by councillor Marshall. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same signal. Hearing none. The consent agenda is approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of seven to zero. Item D, additions or deletions. City manager, do you have any additions or deletions?
No additions or deletions. Thank you, mayor.
Any proposed by council?
I have one. I would like to delete section F because of our time.
So we're going to, there's a, is that a motion, staff, or is it just, it's been presented by, a motion by councillor Gustafson to skip council communications to get us back on schedule? Is there a second for that motion?
Second, bye.
Okay, so it's moved by councillor Gustafson and seconded by councillor Valenzuela. Is there any discussion? Councillor Rippey?
No.
Okay, no discussion. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none. It is approved that we skip item F tonight, which is council communications. That was a vote of six to, or seven to zero. Item E, presentations. We have our emergency operation plan project presentation. And I believe our consultant, Ms. Burr, is on Zoom. So we are going to switch over to her now.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for inviting me to discuss the emergency operations plan project. I have been in discussion with Chief Gearing, and we have decided that we are going to separate out the emergency operations plan for the city of Cornelius and the city of Forest Grove. They're currently combined, so there will be a completely separate emergency operations plan for Forest Grove. I don't see the PowerPoints on my screen. No worries. I have it here. So.
One minute, please. Can the other, councillor see the screen? The presentation? Councillor Rippey? Okay.
Excellent.
Okay.
I can't see it, but I can see it on my screen. Mariah, if you could move it to the, the second slide, which is just my credentials. So again, my name is Stacy Burr, Stacy Burr Consulting. I've been working with local, city, state, and federal emergency agencies for the last 24 years. These are my credentials here. I won't go through bullet by bullet, but you can certainly review them if you'd like. The next slide, please, Mariah, if you wouldn't mind. The next slide is the meat and potatoes of what an emergency operations plan actually is. There are, let me get to my, my slides here. There we go. The first section here is really assigning responsibilities, whether you are a department or a, or staff. And it's understanding what the capacity, the capability, and now since post-COVID, the limitations of services that will be provided if there's any kind of an emergency or a catastrophe, or a no notice catastrophic event. The second set of components here are operations, is based on whose authority it is to implement and mitigate, and whose authority it is if that individual is actually not either present, or they simply cannot be, you can't communicate to them. So it's based on who is, who has the authority, and then based on whose supporting agency also has authority to assist in the implementation of the emergency operations plan, response and recovery. The third is describing how the property, property and people, and more importantly, the services that the jurisdiction provides, which has been a key component post-COVID. If there are in fact limitations, how can you ensure the capacity and the capability of your department and your staff to ensure services, essential services are provided regardless of the type or severity of the event? The fourth is identifying the capacity and the capability of your staff and the resources that are available to you. And specifying what support agencies will be helping you, whether it's county, state, or federal, and how they're going to help you. And how that the communication between the staff and the public and the staff and their support agencies. That also includes the volunteer groups. And the last and final one is mitigating any limitations to decrease the risk to not only the department and the staff, safety wise, but also decrease the litigation risk when it comes to the jurisdiction and the government entity as a whole. So those are the components or the building blocks of an emergency operations plan. So Mariah, if you wouldn't mind, moving forward to the next slide. The next slide shows the suite of emergency plans that go into an emergency operations plan. The first is the base plan. And the base plan is specific to what the infrastructure and the framework that you're going to use for the policies and procedures that staff are going to utilize to implement response and recovery. Part of that is who is in command and control, at what time, when does it exchange hands, and when the authority continues or then moves forward when it comes to which department, whether it's the police chief, the fire chief, or all of the executive staff. The second is the emergency operations center. How is every, how is all the staff going to communicate with each other, coordinate with each other, coordinate with the public, and then coordinate with their support agencies to make sure that if they have any resource issues, whether it's staff or equipment, that they can mitigate that as soon as possible to ensure there's not an impact to response. The second phase of that is what policies, procedures, and processes that the executives need to follow, that the staff needs to follow, that any volunteer needs to, volunteer groups need to follow, and then what is expected. And this is actually going to be quite important when it comes to the fire chief and his responsibilities. But what is expected if they, if staff has other responsibilities to other cities, other state statutes or federal regulations? Roles and responsibilities are very, very specific and refined it down to not only the department as, not, pardon me, not only as the government entity as a whole, but also elected officials. In addition to that, the executive group themselves, and then the staff in each department. Part of the suite of an emergency operations plan includes hazard-specific policies and procedures, how the staff, based on what the hazard is, how they're going to implement and to continue to provide government services or their department services. The last one is the functional planning documents. And those planning documents could be evacuations, it could be public health. There are a number, in fact, the current emergency operations plan has four. I anticipate there will be a fifth one, and that's post-COVID, is the continuity of operations or an overarching COOP plan. That is identifying each essential function and essential service that cannot be interrupted for each department, and then the government entity as a whole, and what, what services can be, cannot be impacted, or can be impacted, so those employees or those staff can then assist with response and recovery. Any, any questions so far?
Yeah, I actually have one question. So when.
Yes.
When you're looking at the policy, procedures, and process, are we going to overlay our EOP with our regional partners, like the county and the state? Like, so it's just really streamlined and we're all working together and on the same page?
Yes, yes and no. Not necessarily overlay, but align. So the, the same concept there that it doesn't necessarily, for example, if the county, the Washington County has, has four different types of response, that doesn't necessarily mean that Forest Grove has to have four. It just simply means that it is expected that there's going to be a different type of response and resources provided because Washington County might be at level two, and Forest Grove is already a level three. And the reason why Forest Grove is at level three is that they only have a certain amount of staff, and the county has more. So that's, that would be the only, but again, it's still, the concepts are aligned in that the impact or the event is escalating, as is your intensity or how many employees or staff you are now implementing and focusing on that particular event. So it is, and it is not only is it aligned to the county, but is aligned to the state.
Great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any questions at this point? I'm not seeing any, Stacy, so you can go ahead. Thank you.
All right, very good. So Mariah, thank you. There are four tasks to make sure that we are, I am effective and efficient in each of the deliverables. The first is what we're doing now, which is project, project organization, just kickoff meetings, briefing, briefing the staff, briefing the city council, of course. The project organization conversations, I've already had with, with Chief Gearing. So we're moving forward with them. The second is my responsibility in reviewing all the documents. These documents are not just the current emergency operations plan, but that includes the county and the state, which I have actually already done. But specifically to Forest Grove is your hazard mitigation plan. So what are all the lists of hazards? There's a couple of hazards that aren't, aren't in your current plan, only because the plan is, is an older plan. So adding those to make sure that those are added, as well as department plans. So if a department has an emergency operations plan, that is what we call it department EOP, bringing that in and aligning that into the emergency operations plan, and asking those department heads or those executives the question of, is this still a policy? And is this still a, a process that you use? And if the procedures are wrong or different, then I would need to, to update that. So for the task number two is reviewing all the emergency management, emergency operation documents for the city of Forest Grove. The third is really the meat and potatoes of the project, and that is me facility, anywhere from 10 to 15 planning meetings with executives, with just the police chief, the fire chief, the county sheriff, as well as a public works. That conversation as to the understanding and communication between all of those individuals in those departments and agencies, to make sure everyone is in fact on the same page, and they understand that there are in fact limitations. So if public works director says, hey, listen, I understand that this is what you want me to do, but you need to realize that these are the limitations that I have. My response to me is to facilitate a mitigation plan for that, or mitigation procedure to ensure that that is overcome and we're not, that they are not overwhelmed. Volunteer groups, as well as a series of executive level planning discussions, to make sure that all of the executives understand what the policies are, they all understand what the procedures are, they understand what each of the departments are doing, so that when something does in fact happen and they do have to implement, they are well aware of what the public works staff is doing. They're also well aware of what other staff is doing, as well as what the city management administration is doing, and the city manager's expectation when it comes to the implementation of a response. The fourth and final one is the development of the plan itself. But then there are two important aspects of this. The first is very last planning session that we do, I then move through a series of hazards and take all of the primary policies and the procedures and move through the hazards that have, that have impacted in the last 10 to 15 years. Then another hazard, if, let's say you've never had a cyber attack, move through a cyber attack, so that each of the executives can say, okay, this is the procedure we have for cyber attack. I can see where this is going to be a problem for my, my department. We, I then de-conflict, I refine that procedure at that time, and then we move forward with a, a procedure that everybody understands, and it has been better refined so that. and it has been better refined so that it covers the hazard, so there's no issues when it comes to go time. The second part of that is actually training the staff, the, training the staff on the emergency operations plan. So every staff member understands that what the emergency operations plan procedures and policies are, but specifically what procedures their department is responsible for. I do this with the executive in, in the same meeting. So if the staff has any questions at all or any concerns, they can then ask the, the executive. And there can be clarification and complete communication as to the expectation of the executive and the expectation of the city as a whole when it comes to disaster or even an emergency response or recovery. The next slide is, is actually the very last slide because this is a timeline of the expectation. So EOP planning sessions, June, July, that executive plan exercise should be in August. The draft would be done in August as well. Once the staff training is done, I find that most of the time staff bring up comments or issues that the executive, just because they have a lot on their plate, didn't realize. And so I, again, more refining, more refining after the staff training and then the final EOP, September of 2024. The last slide is just a question slide, if anybody has any questions for me.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor President Rippey?
Thank you very much for the presentation. A couple of questions I have. First of all, with regard to the hazardous, hazard-specific plans. I hope you take out the chapter that has to do with the zombie attack.
I knew it was that.
The,
And he is, you're correct.
The other specific, I don't think we have anything in our current plan that deals with a rail derailment or a rail accident. And we do have an active rail on the southern part of town. And in particular, that rail service is a company that deals with extremely pure hydrogen peroxide. So if there were to be any kind of a rail accident that involved that chemical, that our, our staff needs to be aware of how to, to deal with that. And then the other question I had actually is, when you mentioned executives being involved, are, does that include elected officials? Or, no, it does not.
No, it's department heads.
So when we do tabletop exercises, why, why do we not include members of the council so that we're aware of, even if we're just sitting in the, in the peanut gallery? I believe, in my opinion, that elected officials need to be aware of what's going on because we're gonna be expected to talk to the public when something happens. And if we are not aware of and comfortable with the plans that are developed, then we are at a disadvantage from the very beginning. So I would strongly recommend that we at least be able to listen in on it rather than necessarily participate in those kinds of tabletop exercises. Thanks.
So the first question is, there is actually a hazardous material annex, and I have read it, and it is not specific and it is not detailed. It's simply not detailed enough. So that is certainly something that is going to be updated, significantly updated. And yes, zombie attack will not be a part. I, I chuckled over that. Yes, you're good to go. Now, when it comes to, there is a training for elected officials, especially elected officials and executives. So there's a training that I'll have a conversation with, with Chief Gearing about that. But there is also a document that I have done a couple of times for other jurisdictions that have asked the exact same question. And all it really is, is it's about five to six pages, but it is, it is a guidelines of the policies that elected officials that, that may have to implement or will have to implement. It's very concise and it really just allows you a quick reference. It's based on the finalized EOP, but it's just a very quick, it's a reference book is really what it is, or a plan, pardon me. And that document allows you to quickly look through it and say, this is the expectation of the, that the staff are doing A. This is what the expectation of the elected officials and the, what's, that's the first reason why the reference. The second reason as to why this particular jurisdiction asked me is because they have to align it with their city code. What was happening is that their city code was outdated, but their emergency operations plan was updated. And so this allows de-confliction when I do a reference guide for elected officials so that you can then at the ready and immediately say, this is the city code. We need to change the city code based on the event to, to ensure that our staff is able to work in a safe environment and that our community members are, are safe as well. So I'll talk to Chief Gearing about that as to whether or not he wants an elected official guide document, a reference guide document.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ewing?
I remember when the first operational plan was put into place. And at that time, I recall that the council was included. I don't support anything where the council is not included and part of the strategic conversation. So I would like to see that placed in there. I'd like to see some guidance on what our response is going to be. That's my, one of my main concerns, as well as while we do have something for toxic spills, I agree that we do have a company in town that has pure peroxide and it would behoove us to not lose sight of that and also highlight that in our plan. So are you saying to me, my question is, I guess I'll break it down. My question is, will we be included as council in part of the plan? And will you be including, I guess I'm not really asking. I'm saying that as a counselor, I want this to go forward. Thank you.
A, a quick clarification question. The reference guide? Is that what you'd like? Yes. Okay, very good. Very good. I'll make sure that Chief Gearing is, is aware of that and I, I'll be able to. What's nice about you doing the request now is I can easily just move us through to that end product. So I, I thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you for your work on this and I'm sure we'll see you back later at the end of the summer when we have some draft forms and some work sessions. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a lovely evening.
You too. Thanks. Okay, at this point, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting of the city council. Please stay where you are because we have a work session coming up in moments. Meeting adjourned.
Melinda is.